Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the special meeting of the Sonoma Developmental Center Draft Environmental Impact Report. That's a joint meeting of the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission, the North Sonoma Valley Municipal Advisory Council, and the Springs Municipal Advisory Council of August 24th. I would like to call the meeting to order and ask that we have the flag presented for and if you'll join me reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. And liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to ask our interpreter Jordi Vidalas, excuse me if I butchered that to make an announcement for how any Spanish language attendees can access interpretation.
Good evening to all panelists and attendees. Today, we're going to be broadcasting in both languages. The main language is going to be English. So to access interpretation, once it's initiated, you can go to the bottoms of your screen and you will access interpretation and choose a language of your preference. If you're accessing through a phone, in the three dots in the superior corner, left superior corner, you're going to be finding those three dots or more. And then you can press there and access to the interpretation as well if we have comments in Spanish. It's going to be broadcast to English. I mean, genuinely. We will start this at all those panelists and all those assistants. El día de hoy transmite remos nuestra reunión en el idioma inglés, pero habrá acceso a la interpretación en español, pudiendo accesar una vez se activada la aplicación en la parte inferior de su pantalla, en el icono del globo. Si usted asiste por medio de un teléfono celular o un iPad puede encontrar el acceso a ello por medio de los tres puntos en la parte superior derecha de su pantalla o inferior de ella también, accesando al lenguaje de su preferencia y silenciando el audio original para escucharlo solo en su idioma. Gracias.
Throughout the meeting, Karina Garcia from Supervisor Goran's office will make periodic announcements for how to access the Spanish translation. We also may take a five to 10 minute break at some point to give the interpreter a chance for some water to readjust his vocal cords. I also want to announce that chat and Q and A have been turned off for the meeting. This is to prevent any potential violation of the Brown Act and public comment outside of the time when public comment is open, which we will have time for that later in the meeting.
And forgive the interruption, Chair. How do I actually put Jordi as an interpreter? Karina, can you help me troubleshoot?
Click on the interpretation icon, select add interpreter and type in his email or start typing his name.
Okay.
It will populate and you'll be able to start him as an interpreter.
So he's in there, but it's not letting me click enter.
Do you want to make me host real quick?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for their patience while we work this little detail out.
Jordi, did you get the notification on your end? Good. We're ready to go, Ariel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. First, I want to make sure to recognize that we have two new members on the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission. My tape three is filling the at-large alternate seat. And Ms. Terry Chrisler is filling the South Valley seat. Commissioners, I turn in Commissioner Chrisler, welcome to the SPC, SPCAC. And thank you for your service to your community. I know both of you through other avenues and I'm very excited to have both of you join us in that capacity. I also want to mention that Commissioner Itri will not be participating with us tonight if she is Chair of the Springs Mac and would be participating with them at this special meeting, just for sake of clarity. The meeting will flow a little different than a regular meeting of the Springs Mac, North Sonoma Mac, or the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory. Due to the amount of community interest in this topic, we are going to ask the public and our council members and commissioners to keep their comments brief and to the point. Otherwise, this will go long into the night. At this point, I'd like to ask the Mac Chair, my paper, I curry, to call roll call for the Springs back.
Thank you so much. Good to see everyone this evening and welcome to our joint meeting. Springs Municipal Advisory Council, Councilperson Lombard.
Here.
Thank you. Councilperson Wenders.
Here.
Councilperson Hardiman.
Here.
Councilperson Reyes. I think she's absent. Councilperson Alcaraz.
Here.
Thank you. Councilperson Parat. And Cherry Turi here. Okay, we have two absent. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask the North Sonoma Valley Mac Vice Chair, Vicky Handring, to manage roll call for the North Sonoma Valley map.
She, if she's not here, I'll do it.
Very good.
All right. So this is for the North Sonoma Valley Municipal Advisory Council. Vice Chair Vicky Handring. Not here. Councilmember Eagles.
Here.
Councilmember Dicky.
Here.
Councilmember Nardo Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Oldroid. Councilmember Newhazard.
Here.
And Councilmember Cooper. And Council Chair Dawson, here, myself.
Very good. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask Secretary Spalding on the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission to perform our roll call.
Gladly. Chair Freeman.
Yeah.
You're here. Secretary Spalding, I'm here. Vice Chair Dicky.
Here.
Commissioner Vella. I saw her. She is here. Commissioner Paul Verenti.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Mullin. Perhaps he's absent. Commissioner Coconan. Commissioner Emelcilio.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Chrisler.
Here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Here.
And Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Let's see, for the city ex officio alternate Commissioner Lo. Commissioner Lo.
I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bramford.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Cornwall. He has something to say to us.
Yeah, I am recused from the SDC item for several reasons, so I'll be moving to the audience and off the panel after we do roll call here.
Thank you. And ex officio alternate Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Thank you. I believe that's us.
For the record, Robert Felder, City Council, I am present.
I beg your pardon very much, Mr. Felder. Thank you for correcting that.
Very much. At this point, I'd like to move to item two on our agenda, which is public comment. And this is for public comment for items not appearing on tonight's agenda. I would ask anybody who does have anything to raise your hand in the audience and you'll be moved to a panelist for your comments. And I want to remind you, it should not be on the topic we are discussing tonight, and it is limited to two minutes. Thank you very much.
Okay, and it looks like we have one hand. I, oh, they went down. So I think everyone's here to talk about SDC. Okay, we have, we have one, so I'm going to put up the timer. One second, bear with me. So we have and you said two minutes, Chair. Okay, and then let me get this going. Okay, we have Iris Weaver. Iris, you should be able to speak.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm Iris Weaver, the Executive Director of the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition. I'm very happy to hear this presentation that we're happening today. This is sort of an administrative thing. I am an individual who happens to have some hearing loss, and I would really appreciate it if all public meetings would enable closed captioning on Zoom so that those of us who do have some hearing impairment can have that additional benefit to understand what people are saying. Often, people's, since people, many people, many of you are doing the Zoom call from home and you may not have headsets or good microphones or have background noise, all of which are difficult for those of us with hearing impairments to track what's going on. So if whoever, I couldn't tell, looking at the little Brady Bunch boxes, who is the staff person or the host of this? But if you could please enable the closed captioning, that would be extremely helpful from an ADA perspective. Thank you.
Very much. And
And noted, noted here is, and when I'm done with all of these little boxes and we go back, I will, I will try to figure out how to do that for you. And my apologies. And it looks, we had someone else and it looks like no, so it looks like that's it.
At this point, I will and at the end of that 10, we will no longer take 10, 9, 8.
And if I may, Chair Freeman, through the chair, I'd like to make the announcement in Spanish for any members of the audience who wish to make public comment to identify how they raise their hand.
Very good.
Thank you. Para los miembros de la comunidad que desean hacer un comentario en español sobre artículos que no están en la agenda del día de hoy, por favor de utilizar la aplicación de levantar mano o raise hand en su pantalla de Zoom. Si han llamado por teléfono, por favor de oprimir estrella nueve y serán identificados para hacer su comentario. Tendrán dos minutos para hacer su comentario. Gracias. Thank you.
And I do see a hand. Sean Seiler, so Sean, you should be able to unmute.
All right, very good. Hi, everyone. Sean Seiler. I sit on the board of the United Flyers of Sonoma Disc Golf Club. We have a lot of partnerships with Sonoma County Parks and Rec and the city of Santa Rosa and variety of other entities, building, maintaining courses in open space areas for disc golf. Very interested to hear about what's being planned for SDC and, you know, hear about the ways in which we can participate and possibly collaborate in projects like this. So just wanted to voice our interest in today's meeting and what's to come out of these sessions so that we can learn more and again, potentially collaborate. Thank you.
10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. And now we are closing the public comment section. And I apologize that I tilted my head down and blocking my my mouthpiece there. So at this point, I'd like to ask Karina to make an announcement for how to access translation before introducing the item, which is the SDC Draft Environmental Impact Report. Karina, if you would, one more time.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. Para las personas que están en la audiencia y desean escuchar esta reunión en español, por favor, vaya a la pantalla, a la parte baja, a su derecha, oprima el icono interpretación or interpretation. Ahí podrán seleccionar el idioma español o Spanish para escuchar la reunión en español. Gracias. Thank you.
Gracias. So at this point, we will move to item number three on the agenda, which is the SDC Draft Environmental Impact Report. We have received this from the presentation would be by the permit Sonoma staff, and I'll read briefly what this item is. The site address is 15,000 Arnold Drive in Eldridge. Project description permit Sonoma, Sonoma County's permit and resource management department has released a draft environmental impact report and drafts for specific plan to guide the redevelopment of the 945 acre Sonoma Developmental Center. The draft specific plan calls for 1,000 units of housing, of which 283 would be affordable, creating a walkable community with an emphasis on affordable housing and active transportation to lessen automobile use. Environmental preservation incorporated in the project will protect more than 750 acres of open space between Jack London State Historic Park and Sonoma Valley Regional Park, add a wildlife corridor and preserve Sonoma Creek and its tributaries. Commercial recreational and civic spaces will be built for use by residents, employees, and the greater Sonoma Valley. The draft environmental impact report elevated 16 key areas of the proposed specific plan, a lower density alternative, a historic preservation alternative, and two alternatives where the county does not adopt a plan and the state leads the development of the site. While the report finds significant and unavoidable impacts in the areas of vehicle miles traveled and historic preservation, the impacts of the draft specific plan overall are comparable to alternatives while being more fiscally feasible and providing more housing. At this point, I would like to turn it over to the staff of Permit Sonoma for a presentation of the draft EIR.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. So good evening, everyone. My name is Brian O, Comprehensive Planning Manager for Permit Sonoma. And we are so appreciative of this time and opportunity to come back and provide an overview of where we're at. Again, it's a big milestone. I'll pull up a slideshow deck here in a moment. But also wanted to introduce our team here. Bradley Dunn, who's our Policy Manager, Communications Lead, as well as Rajiv Batia from Diet and Batia, our lead consultant. And we also have Helen Pearson of Dot and Batia in the audience as well. And so I'll walk through the PowerPoint, the presentation, and then judging by the agenda, I, you know, I open it up and welcome my colleagues here to join me in the response. And so with that, let me share my screen. Chair Freeman, are you able to see the PowerPoint?
I am. Thank you very much.
All right. So this evening, we're here to talk to you about the Sonoma Developmental Center. As Chair Freeman pointed out, it is at the heart of Sonoma Valley, and so clearly there's a keen interest across the board. And so again, we're grateful for the time, not just with the CAC and the commissioners, as they represent their constituencies, but also both the municipal advisory committees within Sonoma Valley, as well as representative from City Council of Sonoma. And so where we're at today, this is, any of you have seen this timeline here. This is the three-year planning process, planning and disposition process that both the county and the state legislature put together and put into action at the end of 2019. And so we're again at a big milestone here. The draft is released. It was released on the 10th of August. We have a 45-day public review of both the EIR and the plan. And, you know, this really kicks off a series of public hearings for the county. And ultimately, we are scheduled to go to the board on the 8th of November for board consideration to adopt both the plan and the certification of the environmental impact report. And so I just wanted to spend a little bit of time talking through, and it's always nice to reset. It's been three years virtual, all done virtually. This might be the only project that starts and finishes in the Zoom world. And so just to lay the groundwork here, we have the state legislation, which calls for open space protection, prioritization of housing, and particularly, particularly housing for people with developmental disabilities as well as affordable housing. And, you know, clearly laid out an opportunity for the local community and the local county to dictate the planning process. And so that's what's before us today. It's the culmination of the legislation with this draft plan. And then ultimately, the other component is economic feasibility. And so lots of discussion and ideas on how to define that. And so it's important to identify that. And then also the community vision and guiding principles. And so we're fortunate and so grateful to have a 15-person planning advisory team made up of local community leaders that meet regularly, provide an advisory role to the project itself. And so, you know, with all of that work, we went back to the board, facilitated a workshop with the Board of Supervisors back on January 25th. And we identified and presented out a community vision and a set of guiding principles. And then the third project goal is really the legacy of care. And so I know this, again, this means a lot of different things to different people. But ultimately, this was a place of care, and we want to ensure that that is maintained in both the disposition and planning process, but ultimately what this place could look like over the next 20 years. And so that's a critical component and guiding post for how our team has approached this work. And so this is again where we're at now. So we're in the public review process 45 days. And there's two documents that are linked to the agenda. And so the specific plan charts out a vision, a land use plan on how to redevelop the property over the next 20 years. Lots of detail in there, everything from specific policies that many of you have contributed to in various workshops over the last year, year and a half. And sort of bookended by an implementation plan. And so all the policies are great. You know, how are we actually going to realize this? And what is it going to look like in the next five years? What's going to potentially be built in the next 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years? It also includes a couple appendices related to what a potential project sponsor, future project sponsor would be conditioned to do if and when they return to the county for an actual project to submit. And so the second document is the environmental impact report. And so this is the 800-plus document, not including the appendices. And so, you know, really the purpose of today, you know, only with only being 14 days into the process, we're using this as an opportunity to help inform. And we're hopeful that after this robust discussion, the community, the leaders here on this Zoom screen can take that back and really submit some really helpful and thoughtful comments as part of the public process. And so I'll outline a little bit of how you can continue to be engaged in this. And so the two big main points here for the EIR, it's the analysis and the disclosure of the impacts to the environment. And so we put a proposal. Chair Freeman outlined that beautifully in his introduction. And so this report really analyzes that and attempts to disclose all the different impacts that we're aware of and how we plan to address said impacts. And then another core component of this is a set of alternatives. And so there are a number of alternatives. And this was largely based on the board comments from the 25th of January this year, wanting to examine development at at different, at varying levels. And so to me, that was a very clear response to how the board weighed in early this year. So planning for this specific plan and EIR, you know, obviously hasn't happened in a vacuum. There's been a lot of really great work that predates our county process. A lot of it has happened on the ground, you know, within your communities, really. And some of that work that the state had started prior to our full engagement with the local planning process. And so, you know, we, heading into that, heading into this process, you know, these are sort of the top concerns that we heard most loudly and really clearly and things that are really important for us to get right. And so we wanted to prioritize evaluating that. And so that was the water supply with any increase, any sort of development, is there enough water? I mean, the, in this context of drought and, you know, water conservation, climate goals. I mean, this was a key concern that we obviously wanted, not just from a legal perspective, but from a good planning perspective, wanted to address. Emergency evacuation, right? We have been through a series of traumatic events and none closer than the Glen Allen community, the Sonoma Valley community. And so this was again, something really important that we wanted to address. And then also the discussion, this discussion predates this specific plan process is mobility within Sonoma Valley. And so what are the impacts of a potential new road that connects Arnold Drive to Highway 12? As well as biological habitat resources, historic resources, we have historic resources with the buildings on campus and then also with any sort of development question about transportation. Right? So vehicle miles traveled is the indicator and the threshold for transportation impacts for the environmental impact report. So this is, and excuse me for this. Just wanted to, you know, have a top line summary of what the alternatives are. And so again, the proposed plan, we're looking at proposing 1,000 units of varying size and availability for all modes of income, as well as job growth. So on the non-residential side, land use that could support up to 940 jobs. And then so we took a look at the different alternatives. So everything from the 450 units up to the 1,000, part of the environmental impact report analysis also includes looking at no project. And so I've seen a lot of questions and comments about that. And so I'm sure we'll get to that. And so this provided a range of alternatives. And we also compared the impacts to the difference in alternatives. And so that's really clearly delineated in the report, in the executive summary. And so that's really clearly delineated um in the report, in the executive summary. And much of the content um that you may be seeing out in the community, whether it's through the local news um or discussions that you're having with your um with your neighbors. And so the schedule is, we're here, um we released the draft August ten. It's circulating for public review. Uh we look forward to a uh presentation uh similar to this uh with the Planning Commission on the fifteenth of September, and so this is really an opportunity uh for um a- another sort of presentation, but really, I mean, that's where we um want to receive comments, um and so that's what it's set up to do. Uh it will be recorded, um and much like many of of the community members that are already submitting comments to me. Uh you can also reach out to me directly, and so the last day that we are taking comment is September twenty-third, end of Business Day, five P M. And we'll take all of the really great and thoughtful comments uh and questions that we get during this period uh and start to prepare a response uh for um a final E I R and plan publication on October seventeenth. And so that will um sort of be that that next step, that's sort of the final document, and then ultimately it's the set of public hearings, so first up would be the Planning Commission on October twenty-seven uh for their uh potential recommendation to the board, and then the board's ultimate vote on the eighth of November. And so there, I did see a question just about how this lines up with the state R F P submission, and so that's something um you know, we can get into um at the next part, and so how to provide input? Um you can write directly to me, there's my address, there's my email address. Um again, I need would need to receive that by the twenty-third, five P M. And then the Planning Commission hearing, uh you know, obviously, we do not want anything to get lost in translation, and so we highly, highly encourage written comments. Um and that way, it's it's notated, it's in the record, you know, we it's you know, very clear what the concerns are, and then we can go about um addressing those in the final uh with the response um to each and every one of those comments. And so uh but having said that, and um also with Director Weaver mentioning ADA stuff, I mean, obviously, if there are verbal um comments that come through, those are things that we also um uh that's the opportunity um for us to receive those comments. And so I want to close out the presentation um with sort of all the the verbiage, all the the um the dates and all of that, it's it's there, I mean, that's really what I'm um wanting to communicate to you, but I'm gonna spend the next uh ten minutes here just walking through uh some of those uh diagrams that you do see in the plan. And so again, I think when we think back to the state legislation, that top priority uh and which is a priority that uh many of us agree and wholeheartedly support is the protection of of open space, and so um you know, this is sort of a very clear picture of of really what will and continue to remain as protected uh for the public um. Uh is this in the green, and I let me switch over to this side, in the green? And then uh the existing campus, so and so you see sort of a clear um uh response to some of the concerns about um the interface between the open space with the campus itself, with the already developed campus. And then another important component to this is really the wildlife corridor, and so we've spent a lot of time, a lot of uh expertise, a lot of discussions with many of you in the community um on how best we uh balance uh a need to redevelop the campus uh but also recognize that this is a critical wildlife corridor um that cuts across not just north south, but also east-west. And and so again, uh this is just a a picture just to really um wanting to highlight the preservation of all the great natural resources that we um enjoy and will continue to enjoy um on the site. Mobility framework, so this goes back to the transportation impacts, this goes back to connectivity, this goes back to the ultimate vision of of what we uh see for this site, and so everything on campus uh is within a quarter mile of that central green, and so you think about um our neighbors to the south, the city of Sonoma with their uh beautiful town square, Healdsburg to the north. Um you know, it it's a it is a design feature, it's it's something that we feel uh there is a right fit for here for this campus, and so working again closely with uh Director Weaver um to really understand the campus uh from a person on a bike um and working closely with uh you know, disability um advocates uh walking the campus um I myself, I have three kids um ten months to up to six years, and so this was a a frequent uh weekend trip for us, and so had an opportunity to really explore the site uh both by stroller uh bike um etcetera, and so uh we feel, you know, again, this is responsive to to much of the comments and concerns around mobility uh for the site, and you'll see a number of, you know, high-quality policies in the specific plan uh to ensure that um this comes to fruition. Uh this is a a figure in the uh draft plan on, and we're looking south. Um on campus, just to your right is the uh historic, the one historic landmark, the the main building. Um and you can see uh sort of a rendering of what this could look like with some of the proposed policies in place. And then historic assets, and so there's a lot of color here, but just I think for the purpose of of what I'm trying to get across here is uh we've done the the studies, um we've assessed uh the historic buildings on site, and really, it's the purple that we should be focusing um uh just at a high level here is uh what is being proposed um to be uh preserved um as part of the plan uh policies. And so largely, it's it's that uh center T, so it's the Sonoma Avenue, uh the Central Green Corridor uh west side of Arnold. Can't have a specific plan without a um uh without a land use map, and so uh this is uh very similar to what was presented to the Board of Supervisors on the uh in January of this year, and so uh this uh you know, would allow the maximum flexibility to achieve a number of the objectives uh that have been outlined um in the state legislation that has been um outlined and summarized in in many ways by members of the community here. Uh this was at one point in time, the Sonoma Developmental Center, uh one of the largest um job spot within Sonoma Valley, and so when we look at the data uh it's clear that there's still a huge demand, an opportunity for uh good, high-quality jobs in Sonoma Valley, and so uh we hope this is reflective of of much of that discussion that happened uh throughout uh the better part of this year. And I wanted to just end here, um just it's so hard, sometimes we throw numbers out there, we throw a way too many acronyms um out uh into the public, and and oftentimes we forget what, why we do this, and what we're doing this for and what this could look like, so that that's where I really love these renderings of of, you know, we talk about F A R, we talk about uh building heights, we talk about number of buildings we want to preserve. But ultimately, um you know, to me, like, this gives you a clear sense of what this could look like uh with some of those policies that we are proposing um for consideration. And so at the top, we're looking um out on to the eastern side, east of Arnold um in a um residential area with a nod to some of the historic agricultural roots of the campus. And then the the bottom slide there is the central green, um and so we're looking at the main building in the background. Um and uh again, policies in place uh for something like this um to be reimagined and redeveloped over the next twenty years. And so with that, I conclude my deck, and I will turn it over to Chair Freeman.
Thank you, Mister O, I appreciate that presentation. Um at this point, I just want to remind people that we are the the um the way that we do this is that we have the uh commissioners ask questions at this point of the presenter. Then after that, we turn to the public, and then we come back to the commissioners for follow-up after that. Um but at this point, I'd like to turn to, I think, uh bear with me, give me one moment, I just want to see where I'm at here. At first, I'm going to the Springs Mac chairperson um. Miss Saturi, if you would go ahead and um ask your members for questions of of Mister O.
Great, thank you so much. Um thank you, Brian, for your presentation, we appreciate it. Um so we are go- so we would like, there are a lot of people, we have a hundred and seven people in uh in the audience, so just keep that in mind when we're asking our questions, so we have a couple of minutes um for the council members of the Springs to ask questions, and I'll call on you and we'll answer as best as we can, and I'm trying to spot you all, so if I miss you, wave your hands. There are a lot of folks on this call. I can call around if that's helpful. Celeste.
Thank you. Um so I I have continued to have um grave concerns when we're talking about afford the the term affordable with housing, I think that affordable housing is a really fast and loose term. Um and it means many, many things depending on the subjective viewpoint of who's using it. And so I have not seen in any of the plans any mention of income-restricted housing, which would be housing designated for low-income residents. And it would be determined um the cost to live there using a calculation based on a designated percentage of the household income, which is very different than housing costs being defined by a pers- a certain percentage below the median housing costs. Um we all know that low-income residents could never afford the median housing costs of Sonoma Valley. So I I really would like to get some clarity um regarding what are we talking about about affordable, and if we are talking about the median housing costs, we need to have a conversation about income-restricted housing. Um I also have a lot of concerns, the the community's been very vocal, that they're not interested in having a hotel or or a conference center, and again, that goes back to the affordable housing conversation, I'm not sure who would work at that hotel and who would work at that conference center if they can't afford to live here because they're low-income, because we're talking about low-income wage earners um in in that industry as well, so I'm I'm hoping we can get some clarity about what we're talking about and get really, really defined about affordable housing because I don't think that that's happened so far, and I'd love to um get that really clear.
So through the chair, are we answering each and every one of these, or would you like me to wait till the end?
So I'd like some clarification on that, my understanding was we were gonna answer, but I'm gonna look to our staff to, is that still the route that we're gonna take? Ariel or Karina?
I mean, that that's how we did it in November, um if the if the answers can be kind of succinct. And if the the council members and commissioners that are um asking the questions can ask different questions than of what have already been been asked, and just to make sure that we're mindful of the time so that all of the council members and commissioners get to ask questions as well as the public, because we do have a really high attendance, so um that's sort of a not a very clear answer, and I apologize, but I I think that that would probably the be the best way um so that things don't get lost.
Okay, thank you, so go ahead, Brian, and then we'll go to the next council member.
Great, uh appreciate the question there. Um and so twenty-five percent uh we're proposing to be the the deed restricted. Um and so that that is a really great question um about um what's in the plan, so twenty-five percent of it will be deed restricted, uh and so that's based on the um state limits that are set, and so that um is one uh component. And there's two other components, and so uh one piece that um may get lost in it is uh we are setting aside five parcels, and so this is work that we are doing um and continue to do with advocacy members of um families with um uh family members with developmental disabilities, and so we're setting aside and have uh will identify five parcels that would be deed restricted. Um and so we could build those uh and to provide that um community uh service uh to the community. And then the third component, um everything, every house, uh you know, we don't envision this uh to be a large ranch-style home, um we absolutely agree, and uh you know, Bradley and myself, we're going through this process with updating our housing element, um and really hearing from folks about the challenges um with securing housing, and so we're going above and beyond, right, um with the deed restricted, but also um everything that could potentially be built um are what they call uh the missing middle, so um not your standard ranch-style, single-family home, uh but enough of a mix of different uh sizes and different types of housing, so we think about duplexes, think uh small lot um homes, think fourplexes, um so that we do have that mix um and opportunity uh for a diverse uh community to afford to live here.
And and just to clarify what Brian said, uh deed restricted means that uh if you know, it's through a state program, and you would pay a percentage of your income, and you would be, there would be income limits that would qualify you for that property, so that's that's the kind of definition there of what deed restricted means in this case.
And it's mentioned specifically as income restricted on page four dash twenty-five as the very first policy under affordable housing, if I may add.
Thank you for the clarification, um Councilperson Lombard.
Thank you, um I would like to um support Celeste's comments. I I don't see how uh having what appears to be seventy-five percent market rate housing is going to benefit our community, um we we really need much more low-income housing, also, although I've I'm I'm sorry, five parcels for um developmentally disabled uh families. Um that seems laughably small to me um. And as far as the hotel, um it's been stated that a person has to make thirty-five dollars an hour to live in Sonoma Valley uh and be able to rent a a a place, um I I'm having a hard time believing that the hotel uh and conference cer- uh center will be paying thirty-five dollars an hour, I'm skeptical. Um another thing I'm wondering about, I have read that um Sonoma County is supposed to be coming up with five thousand new homes by twenty thirty. And um looking at a thousand at S D C makes me, well, I'm cynical. Why does S D C have to have a thousand when the county needs a thousand? I um those are, those are, those are my concerns, oh, also, could you please tell me roughly the square footage of the uh market rate housing? Thank you.
So Iris, the two questions I heard were ma- market rate, the square footage, and um the rate of pay at the hotel and the conference center, those were the two questions.
Thank you, I don't see how that can be guaranteed, um and also can can the the sites for uh developmentally disabled uh individuals and families be increased, five is just so tiny, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just in summary, um, part the part of the. Part of that is economics, right? And so going back to the discussion, going back to that slide about. Um, what the project objectives are, part of our commitment and agreement with the state. In allowing us to do this as the local entity, which again is likely the first of its kind with this partnership. Had to ensure that economic feasibility. Uh, goes into our local planning process. And so there's nothing in this plan. It all it does is set that minimum of 25%, which goes above and beyond. Uh, the county at this point, uh, we have a 15% inclusionary, a 20% inclusionary for for sale. And we're going above and beyond that for this because of how important the issue is. Um, and no- nothing in the plan discounts. Something from happen, you know, a proposal to come in that wants to go above that. Um, but we're also wanting to maintain flexibility.
The the other thing that I would just add is without a plan that, you know, is kind of fleshed out like this. It's hard to seek additional sources of funding from the state and federal government for additional affordable units. So as Brian said, this guarantees that minimum of the 283 out of 1,028%. Which is substantially nearly 50% above what the county would require otherwise.
Thank you.
There's one other that follow up question. Uh, that was raised just about the economics that was raised about the number of units for. The county. So the unincorporated Sonoma County, we're going through a process. To identify, um. You know, essentially 4,000 housing units. And so I just to be clear, like this process. And the numbers that we are coming up with and proposing have nothing to do with that. So. We're looking at this unit count for this site, the site context, Sonoma Valley. And that has no bearing on how we got here.
As as Brian said, that. This won't be built in the next eight years, which is where that 4,000 housing units are being required by the state of the county. So. Uh, this, you know, these numbers would affect essentially the next plan after that, but we don't know what those numbers would be. Um, so those, uh, lots of people have said that, but those two things don't really connect in in the way that Brian was describing.
Okay, thank you. Joe and then Jesus.
Uh, yeah, so um, as someone born and raised in Sonoma, um, I do feel like youth and teens. Get lost in all of this. There's not a lot to do for youth and teens. I know in the plan, there's small little bits that say. Uh, community resources or recreational activities. Is there a plan to dive deeper into what those are? Um, you know, things that will be available for our families. I I just know that it's it's needed, and this is a place that can bring in some great things. I know it came up. Uh, in public comment earlier, things like disc golf, uh, hidden trails, things like that to get people outside engaged and. You know, making good choices. So I guess my my main question is. Are there plans to dive deeper into those pieces? Uh, you know, mainly things that can be there for for families, youth and teens?
Uh, thank you, council person. Absolutely. So. You know, what's before you, what is um being presented is is really a footprint, right? We're we're essentially putting a. Roadmap on how we can redevelop this. In a good way over the next 20 years. And so there are. Um, clear places. I mean, it goes above and beyond, you know, the. Uh, public facility requirements that we have. And so working closely with our county parks and wrecks. Um, to really ensure that. Um, uh, the programmatic. Um, piece, right? So we're laying the groundwork, we're putting the footprint down. But ultimately, there will be that separate follow up process. Uh, if and when a proposal comes in, right at the conclusion of the sale. Uh, from the state directly to private entity. Um, you know, that's again a a place where we would want to get into those details. And as far as engagement with the youth. Um, you know, this was a huge learning curve, particularly during the, especially because of. The pandemic. And so we were, you know, really grateful to work with the Sonoma Valley Collaborative. And, you know, they were able to put us in touch with local teen services. Um, group and and they got a chance to tour the site um with the collaborative and really come up with some really great ideas that. Um, ultimately made it into this plan. Um, that's before you.
Thank you. Jesus.
Hello. Um, my. My question or my comment is more like a comment or a reaffirmation about. The future of the SDC. From my ex- employment experience. That uh, people saying that their best, that the people that used to live there, um, they were passive residents and. The amount of housing considered is extremely um. A lot. I will say that it's um. Completely not true. Uh, from my employment, I say that from people that I think. I take care of people that are like the people that used to live at the SDC. So and they're, um, they need as many people to take care of them. As the people that used to live there. So um. They were always an active. Coming and going of people to the SDC and that will definitely um. Can be compared to the amount of people that will be living there. Also, from feedback from the community, I see a pattern. A lot of people are just. Wanting housing. So I think that. House low, lower income housing is of of auto mass of the most needed. And uh, there are also concerns about um. Water. So. Those were my comments, not necessarily questions. But thank you.
Thank you, Jesus. I think that's it for. The Springs MAC. Okay.
Members. Myte, do you have any questions yourself or are you?
No, I think everyone will cover, cover it pretty well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. But now at this point, um, turn it over to the North Sonoma Valley MAC. Um, council members for their questions. Please.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. Um. So I'm Arthur Dawson, the Chair of the North Sonoma Valley MAC, and I'll I'll call on my council members after I make. Uh, some comments. There's, there's some ideas in here. This isn't, there aren't really any questions, but this is some ideas and some thoughts about where this process might go from here. Um, so I want to thank permit Sonoma for the effort that obviously went into the draft EIR and the specific plan. And I appreciate that you identify the historic preservation alternative. As quote, the environmentally superior alternative. That alternative includes 450 units, which is the number endorsed by the municipal advisory council in our letter to the supervisors. And as Chair of that body, I represent the citizens of the North Sonoma Valley. As well as the 2,000 people from all over the valley and the county who endorsed that letter in a petition. And that number of supporters continues to grow. So thank you for hearing us. Including that number in your analysis and acknowledging that it is environmentally superior to the other alternatives. Unfortunately, the EIR dismisses this conclusion. Financial feasibility is given as the reason the historic preservation alternative was not chosen. This is based on dated information, I believe. Five years ago, you could build housing for $300 a square foot, sometimes less. Today, according to realtors I talked to, the cost is $600 minimum and typically $800 or more. Adaptive reuse costs quoted in November's alternatives report. Uh, range from $304 to $579 a square foot. And page 75 of that report states that, quote. New construction is generally less expensive than adaptive reeds. Now, this conclusion appears to be dated and should be revisited for the final EIR. I can't shake the impression that this whole long, expensive and painful process. Has been done to justify the predetermined magic number of 1,000 homes. Let's see a graph with financial feasibility measured against the number of homes. I've heard developers say that it's feasible at 700 or even 380. We're all imagining the future, thinking we can predict what's years down the road. But it's all hypothetical. Who predicted the 2017 fires or the pandemic? Unexpected things are going to happen. We can build a rosy picture of a vibrant community of 2,600 people inhabiting SDC, walking to work, etc. We can also imagine disaster, people fleeing a wildfire, daily traffic jams, etc. I would guess the reality to be somewhere between these two extremes. We don't know how things are going to turn out. I've seen planning documents from the 1960s. Predicting the county would have 2 million residents by now. We're at a half a million and our population has been in decline. The predictions were way off. So let's not assume that the mitigations built into the Pacific Plan will fully address the impacts of doubling the size of Glen Allen. At the same time, let's not assume that all is lost if development goes above some other magic number. Let's be humble and honest with ourselves and each other. No one on this earth has knowledge of how things are going to turn out. With that in mind, I'd like to close with a few ideas I hope will find wide support. I'm going to request that the Planning Commission direct permit Sonoma. To revisit the historic preservation alternative using more current data. Phasing is mentioned briefly in the specific plan. Performance standards are not. I'd like to see these more fully developed with performance standards applied. When buildout reaches 450 units. Let's take a hard look at how things are turning out. And then decide if we should proceed with more. By then, we'll be able to actually measure the impacts. I'd like to see the possibilities for public-private ownership explored. With a governance structure that secures a measure of local control. And supports affordable housing. Such a structure could oversee the performance standards and the phasing. If the recent past is any guide, we're going to need as much flexibility. As we can find in this rapidly changing world. And I I don't feel like I need a response, uh, but you know, if the planners want to, I'm happy to listen.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, I will call. Let's see, Councilmember Eagles.
Yes, can you hear me? Thank you, Chair Dawson and Brian O. and Bradley Dunn, and good evening to all. I have two areas of very specific comment around jobs and related population and impact assessments. First, I just want to be clear that I am a supporter of a vibrant population at the at the new SDC with truly affordable housing and good jobs at appropriate scale. However, um, I do question the continued citing of population and workforce numbers from the closed SDC care facility. As a comparative tool in the DEIR analysis. Um, used as part of supporting rationale for the level of employees, the population growth and the relationship between these two. I I don't really see how using these numbers and connecting them as a basis for analysis. Or conclusion is really relevant or justified. Um, so the function of the newly developed SEC site and the impacts from the needs and the use of its resident population. And its workforce. Will be so very different from those of the shuttered SDC campus that was at its peak population 50 years ago. So it's really not that clear to me why these differences and the lack of relevant historical baseline. Aren't more directly acknowledged and embraced as part of a robust EIR analysis. It just seems like we're. We're looking back, but we're not looking forward and we're not acknowledging that. Um, and the second and related point, you know, there's, as far as I know, there's no required connection between jobs and housing in the semi rural area that is the SDC. And yet this connection is implied in in several areas in the new documents. And it's possible that every resident of the SDC will drive off of the SDC campus to go to work and and that everyone who works at the SDC site will commute in. From another community. And, you know, we all hope this won't be the case, but it's certainly a possibility that is not fully acknowledged that I've seen. And is a scenario that really should be addressed in the jobs, housing analysis, and in the analysis of development scale. And other potential impacts, the MT and others. So. And finally, I, you know, I'm not the first to or the only one to make these points. Um, they seem really logical to me. And they've been made and well articulated by Sonoma Valley community members numerous times over the past months and. But I don't feel there's been an acknowledgement or response as to the soundness of these points. And and no real change that I'm aware of as frame some of the analysis of the DI and the DEIR specific plan. So I'm just really struggling to understand kind of why not. Um, again, I don't need a a response to this unless anyone chooses to do so, and I thank you for the time. Thanks.
I I just would like to quickly clarify the the baseline issue for the environmental purposes. Uh, we did use the current conditions of a shuttered facility as the baseline for assessing environmental impacts. But just uh for to provide additional information, we added historical use information. So for example, if someone wanted to know how much water was being consumed previously. Or what the need for services was at that time, that's the only reason that information was provided, not 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 as a not as a benchmark to measure our impacts. Thank you.
Yeah, so just important, I mean, it's good background, but um to Reggie's point. Our starting point was the day that we released the. Um, we really started this process. So this was March of this year. And so what we're comparing these. Alternatives, uh, is what you see there at this point in time, uh, 2022. And so. Um, all the impacts that are identified, analyzed and. Uh, written into the document. You know, have the historic context has no bearing um to how we came up with those. Determinations. And then you had that second question about. Um, and I, you know, if it, if our acknowledgement of a lot of the. Discussion around why we talk about the historic baseline or why we end up using it. You know, ultimately, we didn't end up using it. So hopefully that puts that to rest. But the second point about. There's no rural job ratio, jobs to housing ratio and that we can point to. And. I I would say. We're using the data. Um, that our, um, we're using present day data at the end of the day. So. This, when I said earlier in my presentation that there is a huge opportunity for. Jobs in Sonoma Valley. And that wasn't in reference to what used to be there. That is the present day. At this point in time. Um, clearly in the data, clearly in the numbers that show that. There are people that are um that live in Sonoma Valley that um would love an opportunity. And there is a severe shortage of high quality jobs. And so we're hopeful that this plan. Um, is the starting point to achieve that.
I I'll just add very quickly two things in 30 seconds or less. One is that we had an initial brainstorming meeting with the Board of Supervisors at the start of the process. And having economic development and as Brian said, a solid core of jobs, there was identified as a priority by the Board of Supervisors at that meeting, the brainstorming meeting. Very early in the process. When we looked at the alternatives themselves. Um, one of the things that became apparent through the transportation modeling was that if we have more jobs here at Sonoma Developmental Center and we kept the amount of housing as constant. The modeling showed that. Our transportation impacts would be less. Um, so. Um, we we still have in terms of what's being proposed out today, we have more housing than we have jobs and. Hypothetically, if there were to be more jobs, we would have a better transportation outcome. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Okay, I I let someone else speak. I I, yeah, okay. Thank you.
I realized I was unmuted there. I mean, I was muted. Um, so now, um, Councilmember Narda Morgan.
Thank you, Arthur. Not unmuted. Um, good evening, everyone. And as a council member and also Board President of the Glen Allen Historical Society. I want to thank Brian O. and permit Sonoma for listening to our proposal. For historic preservation and recognizing its importance and the community's wishes. For preserving not just these buildings, but the 130 year legacy and story of this amazing place. for preserving not just these buildings, but the 130-year legacy and story of this amazing place. We are supportive of the historic preservation alternative and the fact that it is proposing lower numbers of housing. However, the statement in the E I R that the historic preservation alternative is less superior in terms of, quote, "some environmental features, particularly energy efficiency," unquote, is not supported. I would like to reflect in the record that there are volumes of documented research that proves historic buildings are actually more energy efficient than newer buildings. I know that seems hard to believe, but the data is there. Our team, which consists of scientists, architectural historians and cultural resource specialists, will be sending in more comments and providing data to support this. These changes need to be made so that both the E I R and the specific plan are acceptable under CEQA. Policymakers and legislators often dismiss historic buildings, saying, well, it's just easier, it's more effective to just demolish them. But it's not. Adaptive reuse is the best strategy we have to mitigate many things, including climate change. And I think we all know that climate change is one of the most devastating problems we're facing as a community. The historic alternative can be a viable solution for us. When older buildings are destroyed, they release a vast amount of carbon into the atmosphere. The older the building, the more carbon released. And as you know, these are very, very old buildings. We're gonna have a lot of carbon going out there. Even if a new building operates 40% more efficiently than the building it replaces, it takes up to 80 years to overcome the negative climate impacts of construction. If we reuse and upgrade existing buildings, we just have a greener and more sustainable project on every front. One example of this is the village at Grand Travers Commons in Michigan, which was a 130-year-old decommissioned state hospital eerily similar to S D C. And it is now one of the largest and most successful historic preservation and adaptive reuse redevelopments in the country. It went from the brink of demolition to a thriving community and is a beacon of preservation success. It is really not feasible to support a plan where housing, jobs, equity and economic growth are set against preserving history, the urgency of climate change and the health of an entire community and the natural world. We need to work to bring these factors together. We've entered an era of environmental and climate crisis that requires a new look at our ideas about how we create the future and the legacy we are leaving to our children and our grandchildren. We can solve this by looking at the historic preservation plan. So please consider working with this plan to refine it into a viable and sustainable solution for S D C. Thank you. I really don't have any questions. These were more thoughts and comments. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Angela. And I'll give the planners just a moment to take care to respond. Otherwise, we'll move on. All right, Councilmember Newhauser.
Well, I thank you for this opportunity to ask some questions. I was assigned to work on emergency and wildfire preparation elements within the specific plan as well as the D E I R. And I think most of the issues that I've come across have to do with the potential conflicts between land use and those that are come to mind or the traffic, which we know is something that is not completely mitigated or unable to mitigate. And and also just the buffer zones around the facility and within it. And the, I have a few questions, but just a few points to in the beginning. There seems to be a conflict between reality and and what the estimates were for evacuation times. There was anywhere from, you know, 15 minutes, you know, or 20 minutes to do an evacuation from the facility, yet we know from experience from the non-spire as well as the glass fire that those evacuation times were from one hour to over two hours for some people leaving, especially from Oakmont. So that's that's a real question of comparison with actual experience of residents who were leaving the area. The other issue has to do with 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 the buffer zones and in having a fire safe conditions. We know that the recommendations for for prescribed or prescriptive setbacks for defensible space can be upwards of 100 to 300 feet. And and my concern is that if we establish these modest setbacks like 50 feet for the stream setbacks, we know that fire can be conducted through riparian areas. That if we don't have adequate setbacks for new construction, that the, this is a setup for a clash or a conflict between land use and future requirements such as local rules and regulations that this plan is relying on could change and adversely affect the very lands that we're setting aside to protect. And so usually, safety, public safety trumps environmental conditions. So I think that we need to address that issue of having inadequate setbacks for new construction. The other issue has to do with consultations with local fire officials. And I'm, I get, some of the questions that came up were about underlying assumptions about previous fires and and the quick evacuation period. So if you could speak to that, that would be great. Because there's a, seems to be a conflict there in in what was, what in reality is the time it requires to evacuate. I think the part of the problem, and at least from what I could read in this plan, is that you're relying, that you're relying on just what's happening on the campus. And in like such as the connector road that goes from Arnold to out to Highway 12. If if we're only looking at the bubble up to the boundary, it's not taken into consideration the actual times it takes for people from elsewhere passing through the campus or for people on campus leaving the campus and in fact, fully evacuating the valley. So if you could speak to that too, because it seems like the, there was, it didn't, the plan did not take into consideration the the influence of other communities moving through the area such as from the north to the south, which is the general direction of evacuation during a wildfire, a catastrophic wildfire. So the questions are, does the plan assume that other communities north of these mapped areas won't be evacuating south down Highway 12 and Arnold Drive? The other is, is how can we expect people to take the alternative route, this connector road from Arnold Drive to Highway 12? When that area is the in the, goes toward the pathway of historic fires and into from a high and moderate fire zone and directly into a very high fire hazard zone. I don't think that personally, I would not take that route because it's like leading into danger. And then have fire officials, local law enforcement and fire officials, like the Sonoma Valley Fire Department and the Sheriff's Department, have they been consulted as to not only the evacuation times, but also their ability to serve this this new population? Off the record, we have heard from some fire officials who do not anticipate increasing staffing levels and see this new and large development as being problematic and being able to serve and to be able to protect this new increase in population. So I'd like to hear from you about whether or not these officials have been consulted and what is their level of confidence in the ability to develop an evacuation plan that will actually serve to actually protect people, not just on campus, but their ability to leave and to evacuate the whole area. I think I'll leave it at that. I also have written comments. I'm sure we'll be compiling this at some point to submit. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Planners?
All right, can I, can I say one thing? I just want to remind people, this is the period where we're supposed to be asking questions of the planners. Statements are saved for the end of the of this process. So I just want to remind people of the fact that let's, let's keep this to questions and statements will come at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. So a response from planners?
I can very quickly respond to the the traffic, the evacuation modeling question. And Brian may want to speak to how collaboratively we worked with other departments on this. The 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 analysis was very specifically designed to consider not just the S D C community, but truly, if you're in Glen Ellen, for example, and there was a fire coming in from the northeast moving down south towards Sears Point. And in that scenario, we were not counting on people taking the eastern connection to Highway 12 because that's the direction of the fire. So so some of the, some of the connections become helpful when the fire comes in from the south, but not if it's coming from the north to the northeast. And you will see the times reported out there in terms of Glen Ellen being evacuated towards Sears Point, for example, which is further down, start along Arnold Drive and then further down, you know, in that direction out there. So we were truly looking at communities both north and south, all the way from Sonoma Plaza, then evacuating up north as they traverse through the area. So it is not just about modeling S D C. And Brian can speak to how these scenarios were developed and how the fire department's expertise was utilized, you know?
Thanks, Rajiv. So the two scenarios were identified in literally, quite literally, a meeting with both our Department of Emergency Management Chief as well as the Chief of Fire for the Sonoma Valley Fire District. And so, you know, we we take it seriously. And so this is something that we feel is the most critical component of this impact report. And so we wanted to get it right. And so we leaned on our experts. And I fully hear and understand and sympathize with, you know, the reality of the trauma that many have experienced. And that said, and on an unfortunate note, we have as a county dealt with this a number of times since then. And so our planning, our preparation, the way we time evacuations by zones, I have my zone written on the side of the side of my refrigerator. That is, you know, from everything that we understand from our experts, that's going to make or break, and that makes the difference in getting people out efficiently. And so all of that is reflective, you know, Council Commissioner, you know, to your point, if there are questions or comments as it relates to the draft, I mean, that's, we welcome those in writing. And, you know, we'll have a chance and opportunity to address those. And then just sorry, one question about the traffic. So transportation impacts for the E I R purpose. We looked at the number of miles, right? Each person proposed here will generate. And that's the CEQA, that's the environmental, that's the state law standard. So that's a shift from in the past, when we would look at traffic level of service, there was this giant report card, A through F, on how how well your intersection in your neighborhood fares in moving people through that intersection. So that analysis was, you know, part of our general plan consistency analysis. And so we have addressed that. We don't. So we've addressed that. It meets our general plan policies related to level of service. And so that's probably, I mean, that's why it's not reflected in the CEQA document. Because it's not an impact per state law.
Thank you for your response. And I'll save my comments and follow-up comments for later when we do that section. But I, if, bear with me, I just did have a follow-up question regarding the buffer zones and the setbacks. If you could address that, that would be great because I would like to know the number for that because it wasn't clear to me what what those actual setbacks are. And and if it's going to meet the script, the defensible space guidelines.
So it looks like Rajiv might lean in on the actual, I'll just provide context with our Natural Resources Manager in-house at Permit Sonoma with our fire prevention services. We worked closely to come up with those numbers and that setback. And that's something, again, reflective in some of the discussions that we had been having with the Sonoma Land Trust around buffers for both wildlife, but also for the creek setbacks.
So I'll very quickly add that, yes, you're right, we are, we are actually expanding the creek buffers from where they are right now to 50 feet on either side, as you mentioned, but that's not the buffer on the east and the west side. Those managed landscape buffers are 300 feet wide. So they are wider than the 100 or 200 feet buffers that you mentioned previously around the campus. Thank you.
Does that include the the north side of the campus? Because it's only described or shown on the map on the on the east and west sides.
So the northeast, so the northeast side situation is slightly different than the totally north side because we're actually expanding the wildlife buffer out there. So I don't exactly know how many feet that is. It may be wider than 200 feet out there in the northeast side because we're really pushing it back. We're actually taking out existing buildings that exist out there and turning those over to be a managed sort of a wildlife buffer, wildlife corridor out there. So we are shrinking the the existing campus footprint on the east side and the northeast side.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Dicky.
I'll defer my my comment period to my participation with the C A C.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Dicky. And I believe that's all the the North Sonoma Valley, just in case they've arrived. If Councilmember Handren or Cooper would like to ask a question, this is an opportunity if you're on, but I'm not sure if either of them are on. Okay, then I will turn it back over to Chair Freeman.
Awesome. I appreciate it and thank the North Sonoma Valley Matt for their questions. At this point, I'd like to turn to the Commissioners of the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission and ask that any of you who have questions for the planners, if you would raise your hand and you can ask your questions. And again, I just remind us that we will have time after public comment to actually make any statements that we personally have. So, thank you. So I guess what I'll do is I'll call, well, I will start initially with Commissioner.
You calling on me? Okay, so I have a question that kind of goes back to the vehicle miles traveled. In encouraging people to want to live in this semi-rural location, what is being done to provide services for this new community moving forward, such as, you know, groceries, shopping, business opportunities? How, how many businesses are hoped for? What is the goal? And what is the range of businesses hoping to come in in order to really make a vibrant community where people can live here easily without having to travel particularly far for basic necessities?
Thank you for the question. And so we so the purpose of the plan is to identify a footprint, to identify essentially a cap. And so we are proposing a number of uses that are non-residential to meet some of those local serving needs. So anything from local serving retail market you mentioned. So there won't, the plan is not intended to specifically call out a supermarket or a supermarket or, you know, something or the other. It, it outlines what could happen. And to your point, we feel this is a mix that serves to grow and serve not just this community, but the greater Sonoma Valley. And so, you know, I, I feel like there's also conversations about what this could be. And so back in January, there was a discussion and much public comment and discussion just around, you know, probably our largest issue of our lifetime, which is around climate resiliency and climate adaptation. And so there is a nice mix of public facilities which could potentially be attractive to a research and development and have some focus there. And so, you know, there, there's nothing specific that says, you know, XYZ store shall come here, but we feel like we're laying the groundwork to allow for that to happen over the next 20 years.
I'd like to ask Commissioner Kokenan to ask his questions.
Thanks, Truken. I had a question, one specific question in the the Development Center, Simontive Development Center, specific plan under land use goals and policies. There was a specific point raised around vacation rentals in residential land being prohibited. And I was curious, such a fine point was made on that. I wondered, in the case of fractional homeownership models that promote secondary home ownership rather than primary things like Picasso sort of timeshare malls, why would vacation rentals be called out as something prohibited yet under land use, something like fractional homeownership, which would, you know, potentially attract development funding from whether it's entities like Picasso or those that might attract further syndicated funding from companies like those? Why something like that would not be called out? And if it was just an oversight omission, would something like that consider, would you consider including it in another draft of plan? Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the county, as many other counties are still working towards better understanding. You know, what you're referencing is, is an ownership model versus when we think about vacation rentals. It's on the operation and how we use said property. And so there's been a lot of discussion for many years on the the whether or not a operating a vacation rental is appropriate. And so this again is a direct reflection of community interest and community desire and communication to us about vacation rentals. And it, it is slightly a little bit of a different conversation when we talk about ownership. And so that's, you know, it wasn't an omission per se. I don't believe there's anything that would preclude us from looking at it, but you know, as currently drafted, it's, it's not in there.
And, and I would just say that the board has directed us to look at creating a kind of comprehensive policy on fractional shares. So that's, you know, being undertaken currently, although not related to SDC, but you know, that would obviously give us some guidance. The result of that effort.
Thank you. I would like to call upon Commissioner Dicky for his questions.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of questions and I have comments that I'll reserve for later. First question, page 465, EIR Water Supply Assessment. I quote, "It is assumed that the planning area will be served by local onsite service water, surface water sources." And I'm wondering who the developer will be of those water sources? Is there a will serve document or a water resource assessment document that's been provided? Is it required for the EIR? Is it the Valley of the Moon Water District that's going to do that? Or is it Sonoma County Water Agency? That's one question. The other is that the Highway 12 connector, my understanding of, of connections of that sort, where you enter onto a freeway, which Highway 12 is, there's a separate EIR that's required, you know, Caltrans does it. So is that going to be developed concurrently with everything else? Or is that, does that come into play later? So as an infrastructure development, does it take place after the development is underway and it's agreed upon at a later date? Another question I have again in the EIR is that for traffic, you speculated that it was going to be one and a half minutes of additional travel time for four full SDC site evacuation during a fire. And I just thought to myself, one and a half minutes additional travel time seemed kind of short. And I'm wondering what kind of assumption that was used to, to develop that data? And again, talking about assumptions, the business, the business model economics were also based on assumptions. And I, so you can kind of tell the, the nature of my question is that a lot of these things are based on assumptions. It's assumed or it's an assumption. And isn't that like, I don't know, contraindicated in an EIR? I mean, if you're trying to develop a specific plan and these details are based on assumptions. I don't know, that seems like a pretty big gray area to me that lacks any kind of specific detail. So thanks very much for your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Every aspect of the EAR uses the best available data. And so you can call it assumptions, data, facts, you know, we're using the best available data at our disposal to disclose and analyze all the potential impacts of this project. And this, I think this is a perfect example for what the purpose of the, the public comment period is for. If there are questions about how we, you know, unfortunately, we don't have our traffic consultant here with us today. And, and so if there are these specific questions, you know, we've, we as a community feel like there is something lacking in the analysis that the county has provided. That this is, this is what we want to hear. This is what the process is for. Nothing is baked, you know, there's no magic number. And this is what the opportunity for everyone is to provide that input to us. So we can move forward with a better process and a better product. And, and so I think that addresses the assumption question across the board. The question you had about water. It, we're having, there's two other, oh, there's two processes that are currently happening that would extend beyond this and can extend beyond this, which is how do we manage the open space, right? So I haven't actually had that comment posed to me yet, but there is a part two to all this processes. Who's going to manage the open space and what is it going to look like? And so that's another longer discussion. And that involves a number of organizations. And in a similar vein, there is a, there's going to be a longer conversation that involves both Sonoma Water, our county entity, as well as the current water retailer, which is Valley of the Moon. And so we've had some really productive conversations as a group and will continue that. You know, as redevelopment happens on this campus.
If I, if I may add, the question was also, was a water supply assessment done? Yes, it was done. And in addition to the EIR itself, there are appendices to the EIR that are also available at the project website. And the entirety of the water supply assessment is appendix D. It's available for anyone to review. And that was completed in July, this last month. There is, there are also details of the traffic modeling data as appendix F in the, in those appendices. Those are about 150 pages of appendices that we have provided to everyone. So we are transparent about the water resources, the assumptions for that, the traffic results, they're, they're all available to review.
Commissioner Dicky. Have your questions been answered?
Oh, no. But you know, those are the answers that we received.
Okay, thank you. I think I understand. Commissioner Ex officio Carr. I call on you for your questions. Ex officio Carr, we can't hear you.
Ex officio Carr, please press star six on your phone to unmute.
I'll move on to Commissioner Brown at this point for questions that she may have.
Thank you. I, I appreciate what we said about assumptions, but it seems to me that we're coming to some really critical points in this whole process. And I am concerned when we rely on assumptions to reach an answer such as, for example, as evacuation time that don't match our lived experience. So my question is, and it's possible I may have missed it somewhere in the, in the report is why aren't we calculating evacuation time based on the real life experience of the evacuations occurring at night? And, and doesn't that also relate to how many people will have to be evacuated? I mean, I think, I think it's kind of something reasonable in life experience to say during the day, people are going to be out doing things. It may not be at home, but at, at night, likely they're going to be evacuated, people are going to be home and they're going to all be getting into their clothes and their cars at one time. So I think that to me seems logically would, would affect the evacuation time and congestion. So can you answer the question about whether that real life experience was taken into consideration and calculating the evacuation times? And my second question is, I don't understand how you, the assumption can be made that the state is going to continue to have control over the property once this process is completed and that the state will develop it. Excuse me. I mean, isn't it equally likely that a private developer may, may decide to develop the available property and therefore would be subject to the county? So those are my two questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. And so for the first question, again, you know, it wasn't an exhaustive list, but through coordination and consultation with our local fire experts. And that's how we came up with those two scenarios. And I would rely on our experts for, you know, not just their lived experience as residents, but also aiding and leading people in the event of a emergency. And so again, if there's something in, you know, Rajiv pointed to the, the numbers and some of the assumptions and that went into it, if there's questions about that, I mean, that, that's the purpose again. So, you know, please put that in writing, please share that. We, that's what the 45 days are for. And then your second question about the assumption that we're taking for the no project alternative, what will the state do? You know, again, there could be an exhaustive list. We, we spent a lot of time on if this, then that. And the ultimate land, the place that we ended up was it's, it's too much of a, of a reach. And so the fact is the state owns the property, the state has objectives to for, to meet a number of state goals. And they have clearly identified and outlined priorities specific to this campus. And so we took that and we came up with a two-part range of low development and high development, but the state currently owns the property. And they are leading the process to sell the property to a potential project sponsor. And so our logical assumption is that the state will continue to either develop to meet a number of their goals or follow through with the sale of the property. And so that went into our thinking and how we presented it as options.
The sold, then it would still be subject to county regulation now.
So those two scenarios are foreseen in the event that the county does not adopt a specific plan. And so the state would be able to utilize a number of methods to allow for development at the site while they still owned it, one of which would be a ground lease, which they've done with other state facilities. So, you know, that's where the assumption is these, is that if we do not produce a specific plan that meets our timeline and the, you know, the variety of requirements with the open space, the prioritization of housing and having a fiscally feasible project that the state would move forward utilizing the variety of avenues they have with, you know, their jurisdiction superseding ours to develop the property, as Brian said, in keeping with the goals that they've set out for the SDC campus.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to go down my, oh, actually, let's try one more time with Commissioner Carr. Can't hear you. Okay, I'm going to move on at the moment to Commissioner Spalding. I'd like to see if you had any questions.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now go to Commissioner Vella and ask her if she has any questions at the moment.
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vella. Commissioner Paul Verenti.
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Hermosillo.
No questions at this time, but I'll have comments later. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Trisdale. Thank you. And I turn once more back to Commissioner Itri and just see if you had any questions at this point.
Thank you so much. I don't have any questions at this time.
Very good. Thank you. I'm turning to Ex officio Commissioner Felder.
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Ex officio alternate Commissioner Lo.
I don't have any questions at this time, but I would like to recommend that on the subject of fractional ownership in Picasso, that they take a look at the ordinance that was passed in the city of Sonoma that was to prevent some of those timeshares, if you will. So just a, a comment that the city of Sonoma has adopted such a program and I'll have comment later. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I'm really, Bramford, do you have any questions at this point?
Chair Freeman.
Pardon me?
Were you calling upon me, Commissioner?
I was indeed. I was indeed, Commissioner Bramford.
And I will say nay, ta. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr. Is that you, Commissioner Carr? Sorry, who is?
Yes, that is that is Commissioner Carr's phone number because he called in and I don't know. It seems like he's having some issues with his phone and I'm getting a lot of feedback. So our sincere apologies.
Okay. So seeing all of that, I think we are done with the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commissioner Commissioners' questions. I don't have any at the moment. And I would like to let everybody know at this point we're going to take a break. It's now eight twenty-two. I would ask that everybody comes back at eight thirty. I would like to ask Karina to make the announcement for how to access translation just before we head out for an eight-minute break.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. Para los miembros de la comunidad, les queremos avisar que vamos a tomar tomar un descanso. La reunión continuará a las ocho y treinta de la noche y vamos a continuar con mensajes, perdón, con comentario público. Para poder hacer su comentario tiene que oprimir la aplicación de levantar mano o raise hand y se le otorgará el permiso para hacer su comentario. Regresamos a las ocho y media. Gracias. Thank you, Chair Freeman.
As a reminder, at the end of the break, we will have public comment. Thank you.
Afraid I'll lose the I'm afraid I'll lose the connection to the, I won't be able to hear.
Tim, I don't know if you can hear me, but you're doing a great job. Just thought I'd let you know.
Thank you.
Second, that, or second name, yes.
Commissioner Freeman, you didn't ask yourself if you had any questions.
You missed it. I stated I didn't have it. But thank you.
You're being so kind to the rest of us.
I really should have taken some drugs before.
Sounds like somebody else took them for you.
Yeah. We are live and recording. And at this point, I would like to let you know that we're going to open this up for public comment. I'd like to ask people to make public comment, to raise their hands now, just so that we can see approximately how many of you will be asking to speak. And for those of you with who are on phone, if you hit star nine, that will tell us that you're looking to make statements or ask questions. And we also need to establish the order and get a sense of how many. So the time allocation is going to be ninety seconds per individual. What I found is that believe it or not, ninety seconds is a long time for somebody to make a statement. And again, I want to encourage you to also follow the guidance of our planners and submit any of your comments online to Planner O. And that is another method of communication. So I just wanted to mention a few things prior to opening this up. If someone, someone has already said what you want to say, feel free to say, I agree with so-and-so person or topic. That's totally fine and can get you to the end of your question quickly. Please use respectful language and avoid personal attacks. This is everybody's believe it or not, doing this in good faith. And if you have longer comments, you can submit via email to arial.cubu-jones@sonoma-county.org and she'll put that in the chat for people. And she'll go ahead and distribute that to all of the MACs, the SBCAC and the planning team. So before we start, I would once again like to turn to Karina and ask her if she would make a statement of how to access the translation for those people who need it. And I'd also like to say that I am completely oppressed, impressed with Mr. Vidal's ability to speak consistently throughout this whole time period.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. A toda nuestra comunidad de habla hispana que desea escuchar esta reunión en español, lo puede hacer. Vaya a la pantalla, a la parte baja, a su derecha de la pantalla. Haga clic en el icono de interpretación o el icono global. Ahí podrá podrá seleccionar español o Spanish. Automáticamente estará escuchando nuestra reunión en español. Agradecemos a nuestro intérprete Jordi Vidal, que está haciendo un excelente trabajo. Y también vamos a comenzar con la sección de comentario público. Si desea hacer un comentario, por favor, utilice la aplicación de levantar mano o raise hand. En este momento se les otorgará noventa segundos para hacer su comentario en español y será traducido al inglés. Muchísimas gracias. Thank you, Chair Freeman.
Thank you. Okay. So at this point, we'd like to turn over to public comment and you will be placed as a panelist and again, limiting your comments to a minute thirty. Thank you so much.
Okay, first up, we have Paula. Paula, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, this is Howard Sapper and I'm on Paula's computer. I'm Officer of the Sonoma County Commission on Human Rights and I'm the Chairman of the Ad Hoc Disability for the Human Rights Commission. Brian, first of all, we want to thank you for coming and speaking with us. It was very meaningful. I want to know, Brian, if you could give an answer to how many parcels, how much population, five parcels for disability community would be? Number two, I'd like to make a comment on the lack of representation for the Native American community in any of the plans. It was their land first and foremost. And lastly, I would like to say that I love the stability of the process and I think that if we keep pushing forward together, we can come to the best solutions possible. But I do think that the marginalized people have definitely need to be represented in this plan in a more significant way. And they don't really have that much of a voice. And that's why I'm here to help lend a voice on their behalf. So I kept that under a minute, which is good for me. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have David Ikar. David, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, David Iker, living in Boise Hot Springs. And you really need to take a survey of evacuation experiences of us. In October two thousand seventeen, a wildfire started Sunday night. We did not have to evacuate right away. But on Wednesday, with the Nun's Fire spreading toward us from the north and another fire spreading from the east and an Alameda sheriff deputy arriving at our door and saying, you should evacuate, even though it was not mandatory, we left early Wednesday. Arnold was backed up almost to Boys Boulevard heading south. It was stop and go to Walthamour. It took over an extra hour just to drive down that. And if and there probably were hundreds of people in that line there. So they all had the same experience. So an extra fifteen minutes or two minutes is ridiculous. So the other thing is the draft EIR does not take into account the full impact of a hotel for vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. Hotels with conference rooms, especially when SDC will be a destination hotel and draw more visitors to Sonoma Valley. So the entire trip, door-to-door, needs to be counted, including the visitors' travel to the airport, the air travel and the trip to the airport to the SDC. Many assume that hotels won't bring new visitors, but if they have conference centers, you just look at the Sonoma Mission Inn and MacArthur Place, they have business conferences during the week and people are coming there specifically for that. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Josette.
Hi. I think the MAC, members of the MAC and SVCAC said it best with many of their comments. The draft EIR is not specific and does not address the real impacts as they exist in today's world. You need it to be smaller, totally green, have adaptive reuse, solar, gray water, concentrated housing with a very small footprint, no fencing of any kind, no bright lighting, no new roads. It needs to be specific in the EIR. And as a point of reference, it took us over one and a half hours to get out of the valley during the two thousand and seventeen fires. The only way you're going to get anyone out is if you add, if you add thousands of people at SDC is if you build a couple of freeways out of here. A new highway twelve connector just will not do that. All it will do will impact the wildlife corridor with the light and the and the interruption of that. The other thing that popped out at me was a statistic that came out with the thousand housing units. So two hundred and eighty-three are affordable. You take twenty-five percent at deed restricted. That gives you actually seventy units of what might be real affordable housing. I feel a lot of this is doublespeak and I don't really feel that we're really getting anywhere. Thanks so much.
Okay, and next we have Richard Dale.
Thank you. I'm Richard Dale. I'm the Executive Director of the Sonoma Ecology Center. We feel this property's redevelopment should be something that people in seventy-five years will be proud of, or at least happy with, something that manifests California's and Sonoma Valley's highest ambitions. It needs to be designed for future residents, for today's children and their children. From our view, this means it has to embrace and lead the vision of a climate-smart valley, one that carefully stewards its biodiversity, its land and its water. We have several points we'll include in a formal comment letter and I'll focus briefly on two. Regarding biodiversity, the draft plan relies on conventional data sources that are known to be incomplete, primarily the California Biodiversity Database. We submitted during the IR scoping, a set of sixteen hundred recent expert-confirmed observations of plants and animals on the SDC property, including protected species like western pond turtles in the areas of the new proposed road to Highway Twelve. This data set and its implications are missing from the IR and we'd like to see this data set included, assessed and its implications considered. Regarding water, this is an opportunity site where we should be modeling how water should be stewarded for both people and nature. As one example, the stream setbacks of fifty feet as shown in the draft plan are definitely not sufficient to provide sufficient room for listed species, room for projects that could ease anticipated storm flows that will impact the site in the valley to provide room for wildlife corridor movement. Setback should be increased to a minimum of a hundred feet, especially on mainstream streams, Sonoma Creek. I also echo Mr. Sapper's comments on increasing representation and also really thank the the people for the process. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Greg Garazi. Greg, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, this is actually Mary Garazi on Greg's iPad. I'm a resident of Glen Allen. I've lived here for 27 years and raised a family. So I know how incredibly special this place is. I agree with so many of the concerns that people have raised. But the one thing I haven't heard in this housing proposal is the scope to put it into some perspective. So Glen Allen has about 400 housing units and this project would have a thousand houses right next to this tiny little village. To put it in perspective, Petaluma has 23,850,000 units, housing units, give or take little. That would mean putting 50,000 housing units right next to Petaluma. So people can just imagine that and imagine what that would do to that town. That's exactly what would happen to our town if a thousand houses go in. So I just would like people to keep it in perspective and realize that this is a very rural area and it's not a city. Thank you.
Okay, next, next we have Celia Cruz Del Rosa. Celia, you should be able to unmute.
Oops. Thank you very much. I'm Celia Cruz Del Rosa. I'm a director from Sonoma Valley Hospital. I want to thank the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission, the Springs Municipal Advisory Council, the North Sonoma Valley Municipal Advisory Council ex officios, the various county agencies and all the community participants tonight. Sonoma Valley Hospital is part of the Sonoma Valley Healthcare District that serves Sonoma Valley. That's roughly an area between Sears Point to Glen Ellen and east of the Napa County line, some 45,000 residents. The hospital is one of the larger employers based in the valley with currently 345 employees. We are a member of the Sonoma Valley Collaborative and we support S V C's consensus viewpoints on S T C. The highest possible percentage of housing there can be affordable to middle and low income households. The current proposal is only 25% affordable and integrated community where households of varying income sizes and backgrounds are mixed together and a fully protected wildlife corridor and natural resources. S V C's housing blueprint is identified and can be found at S V C's, which is Sonoma Valley Collaborative's website. We find that this, that the S T C is the largest single opportunity to create housing affordability in Sonoma Valley for a generation to come. I like to say that the hospital has an emphasis on affordable housing for middle income households. As of now, 31% of the staff reside in Sonoma Valley and almost cited now is the lack of affordable housing. We also feel that as the footprint is being defined, that the campus would be ideal for multiple community and individual health programs, whole lifestyle education, rehabilitation, neurological recovery, mental health and substance abuse. Thank you for allowing me to make this comment on behalf of the hospital.
Okay, next we have David Rigode. David, you should be able to unmute.
Yes. I hope you were able to read my letter that I hope has been forwarded to all the commission members. I would happy to meet individually with commission members to go over this in detail better than I can do in 90 seconds. Everything I assert in that letter can be documented in writing. A number of false statements have been made here tonight. That the top priority in this development is open space. Look at S B eighty-two, affordable housing is co-equal with open space. That's evidence of bias. The statement that the missing middle is 120% to 160% of the A M I, false statement. Lack of funding for affordable housing, no, there would be adequate over a 20-year period to build all the affordable housing we ever approved. That's a false statement. And the disassociation of the Rena numbers in the county's requirement to produce affordable housing as being separate from this S T C planning process is a false statement. There will without a doubt be some form of injunction or lawsuit based on a lack of compliance with S B eighty-two, lack of compliance with the governor's directive N O six two thousand nineteen, the failure to affirmatively further fair housing. And again, the non-compliance with the Sonoma County Housing Element and the Rena numbers as well. Nobody wants the hotel. This conference center is a scam for the environmental industry. Let's just do affordable housing as much as we can on the site and not subsidize the private developer who's looking for a cash cow. Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Paul Rocket. Paul, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, thank you. I'm Paul Rocket. I live in Sonoma. I have, I'm a physicist with many years of experience in code development. And when I see the simulation that you've been using for emergency evacuation, it's so obvious that it has not yet been benchmarked. You need some real hard data, but as many people have been telling you, it's right there in the middle, in front of your face. There was the Nun's Fire in 2017, came through at 11:30 at night. People were awakened. All of a sudden they had to clear out. And that involved Oakmont, Kenwood, Glenwood, Glen Ellen, the S T C area, the Springs and Sonoma. And if you include everyone and you get, you find out from Cal Fire and from these anecdotal stories what the real times were in evacuating, then you'll have a credible code. Lastly, on the climate change, I'd simply point out in your water supply assessment, it is so obvious that you just don't understand that climate change is not a temporary feature. It's a permanent feature. You talk about single dry years. There are going to be multiple dry years. The norm will be the non-dry years. You talk about partial rebound. Partial rebound suggests you think this is going to end. It will come back to your normal situation. It isn't going to be that way. So I hope someone with some real credible scientific background can participate in helping you design this E I R as it should be. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Nick Brown. Nick, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you council members. In a traffic study permit Sonoma shared a year ago, the traffic rating with approximately a thousand homes on S T C would give Highway twelve in the Springs area an F rating, the lowest rating and described as congested. Tonight's so-called preferred alternative has a thousand units potentially codified into the final specific plan. In the segment explaining fire danger mitigation at a thousand units, the mitigation offered is a road from the campus to Highway twelve. How is directing fire evacuation traffic onto Highway twelve when the study lists overall traffic already at an F with a thousand homes a mitigation plan for fire evacuation? The historic preservation alternative studied in these planning documents lists no road needed to Highway twelve because the historic preservation alternative has a more reasonable number at 450 homes. Various builder groups who have studied the S T C site have concluded they can turn a profit at 400 to 600 homes. The housing numbers in the historic preservation alternative are reasonable and when adopted will lead to a much safer impacts on, to our community. Please re-study and adopt the historic preservation alternative, not the alternative with a thousand housing units. The 450 number will naturally mitigate many of the community's safety and traffic concerns. I and I largely agree with everybody who spoke here. Thank you all again and let's get this right.
Okay, next we have Teresa Murphy. Teresa, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. I'm Teresa Murphy and a forty-year veteran of S T C and a member of the Historical Society Board. I'd like to thank the authors of the plan and the draft E I R. Reciting the historical society as an important resource in creating a sound future for Eldridge. And I also support our Northern MAC representative's statements wholeheartedly. I also support the historic area plan. My concerns with the D I R is that there appears to be only suggestive language with regard to building preservation and establishment of historic area. The G E H S has access to important information for building preservation, which does not exclude concerns about carbon footprint, as Angela Moore has stated. The plan suggests that the historic designation of the entire property can be disregarded after building removal. I disagree about historic designation removal and I have an example. The elders found, a fire station was built in 1932. The report states that this building was less than historically significant and should be considered for removal. I disagree. It's the oldest fire suppression buildings owned by Cal Fire were built in 1931 and 32. So these are significant. And I also, before I close, I just wanted to say it took me five hours to get to San Francisco from Glen Ellen on October fire in 2017. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Charles McIllic. I'm sorry that I'm sure I said that wrong. Charles, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Charles McIllic. I'm a professional cultural resources specialist. I have been conducting research related to the history of the S T C since 2012. I was the first person to submit documentation to the state archives identifying it as a historic district, but I was not the first professional to recommend this. Regarding policies and impacts to cultural resources, the draft E I R does not specifically address impacts to contributing resources. This should be its own section, not embedded in the discussion of impacts to the district as a whole. For example, if impacts to the integrity of the historic district are considered unavoidable and this would result in removing its eligibility, under CECL, that means there are no contributing resources because there is nothing to contribute to and that all the conditions of approval referring to contributing resources are effectively moot and not applicable. Is this by design? Is this an oversight? For example, how does policy four dash two five apply? Also, where is the assessment of benefits for a national register listed historic district? It's not even discussed in the alternatives for comparison. Regarding the Sonoma House and the main building, policy two dash four seven uses terms like consider and if feasible. Where is the text describing how these determinations will be applied? Why is this not explained through explicit mitigation measures of which there are currently none? The draft E I R is full of these issues and I will be submitting a detailed response as I have extensive comments and or questions related to the impacts, conditions of poor approval and lack of legitimate mitigation measures related to historic preservation at the S T C. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Terry Shore. Terry, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening. This is Terry Shore, environmentalist, 515 Hopkins Street in Sonoma. As we don't have adequate time to make meaningful comments on the S T C draft E I R and the proposed self-mitigated specific plan regarding the preservation and transfer of the open space, the proposed overdevelopment of the historic campus or the significant and unavoidable environmental impacts that will increase driving and exacerbate the climate crisis, prevent robust historic preservation, degrade biodiversity and compromise the wildlife corridor, increase wildlife risk and hazards and do little to address the housing crisis or in increased equity in Sonoma Valley. I will instead use my time to let you all know that members of the public in the community are overwhelmed and we need legal advice now to help us fundraise to hire a legal advisor. I would like the elected officials and the county to please help us provide, provide us with legal advice pro bono. And I'm also reaching out to the public to help us raise funds to hire an attorney with expertise in the California Environmental Quality Act. Ultimately, that will help everyone involved because we'll be able to make productive, legally enforceable comments to get the best outcome at S T C. Terryshore@gmail.com.
Okay, next we have Jay Gamel. Jay, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you Ariel. I made popcorn at the break and it was so good to enjoy this movie. It's, my comments are, I should come back to it. What Paul Rocket said, I absolutely agree with. I couldn't agree with more. I had my comments straight down here and managed to lose them with no problem. I think one of the issues that is recurring over and over tonight is the fact that it's only been mentioned twice that I've seen in the written stuff that this is a programmatic environmental impact report, a P E I R, which is vastly different from an E I R, which has been referred to all along from all places. This saying does not by deliberately address specific projects. And this has come up again and again, and I see that it's misunderstood by members as well as everybody else around here. And I think it needs to be really explained. The other thing, I don't know if traffic is taken into account future development, Hannah Boy Center, Timber Resort, El Noca, specific large winery events during fire season. I don't think the answer to how big the market rate housing is going to be was ever made unless I didn't understand it. And by the way, the E I R is 800, 789 pages and the appendices that Mr. Batia referred to as a source of information, they are 3,534 pages long and we're expected to digest Mr. Curial in 45 days. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Sonia Carabel. Sonia, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, my name is Sonia Carabel. I'm a researcher with Unite Here, which represents hotel and hospitality workers around this, around Sonoma County and the North Bay. And I have brought up this issue with the Sonoma with both MACs before, but want to just bring out the idea of community benefits as a possible way to address a lot of these issues. Community benefits agreements have been implemented particularly on public owned land like this. On many projects throughout the state, our union has been involved in negotiating them and they can address all sorts of issues from affordable housing and levels of affordability to tenant protections at the site, to, you know, open space and environmental protection, to ensuring that the jobs on site have living wages. You know, I know that there's been mention of the hotel jobs being bad jobs and the reality is that's usually true, but it doesn't have to be that way. And there are steps that we could take if we do go down that path to, you know, to ensure that if there are going to be hotel jobs, they are high quality jobs. And a community benefits agreement could be a vehicle for all of those things. And that could be implemented as a requirement in the specific plan. In fact, if it's not implemented as a requirement in the specific plan, then we really lose our shot to actually negotiate with a developer once we know more specifics on the project. So I really wanted to adjust that be put in as a requirement in the specific plan. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Vivian. Vivian, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, thanks. I would just briefly like to tell you a personal story. My daughter was in the coffee park area during the fires, woken up at 2:30 in the morning, had to get into her car. Flames all around. She was driving through fire. She was, literally had to go onto like sidewalks just to try to get out. There was so much traffic backed up, absolutely horrifying. She has terrible PTSD ever since then, as you can imagine. And so the thought of like ridiculous amount, thousand homes, which probably means 2,000 cars, on top of all the congestion we're already ready dealing with. I don't know if people drive in Sonoma on either twelve or Arnold at three in the afternoon when kids are getting out of school and people are going to work. It's bumper bumper and that's just a regular day. And now you want to add a thousand homes and all these, it's just insanity. I also think that you're looking kind of following the American model slash and burn, profit, profit, profit. And that has led to basically what we're looking at is human extinction. And so we have to form a new model, like what about like they do in Europe? I was just there a few months ago, having apartment buildings, near train stations, affordable housing for people. They can take the train so we're not impacting our beautiful valley. So the last thing I want to say is I would really love to have a town hall meeting where we can look each other in the eye like the olden days and speak person to person. Thanks very much.
Okay, next we have Tom Conlin. Okay, next we have Tom Conlin. Tom, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Tom Conlin, speaking as an individual tonight from Sonoma Valley. I want to say I first support the statement of the Sonoma Valley Collaborative and the Sonoma Ecology Center's comments earlier. I also appreciated comments from Mr. McIllic, Ms. Shore, Mr. Gamble, so many others. My concerns, and I've just begun my review of the E I R, but my concerns goes first to the very sketchy no-project alternative discussion. On page five twenty-nine, the E I R states the E I R cannot prejudge the state's actions. But I'm concerned that by presenting such a limited and yet strangely specific set of no-project options, that you're doing exactly that. You're really limiting the true definition of what a no-project should be under CEQA in California law. Commissioner Brown laid this out, you know, a scenario whereby the state would be able to proceed with the sale of the property to a private developer. And my question is, absent, you know, such a no-project alternative in this plan, is there some, is this, is there some assumption that CEQA would be waived under that private ownership situation? In the scenario that Mr. Bradley mentioned, Mr. Dunn mentioned that the there would be a ground lease option, is that, is that also the case that CEQA would be waived? And then are you familiar with other case law where this has been tested before? Thank you for your consideration, my comments tonight.
Okay, next we have Anna Peer. Anna, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, and thank you to permit Sonoma. But I have to say I find your response to the endless hours of public comment in January to be pathetically poor. Your report does not incorporate all the concerns or any practically any of the concerns that were voiced by numerous community members again and again, which makes me rather skeptical about this moment of public comment. But I will say I support many of the people who have spoken previously. Lived experience says that the ability to exit, we took two and a half hours to get to Petaluma when it wasn't even during the fire. It was two days after driving down Arnold Drive from our home in El Verano. I'm highly concerned that there has been so little attention to the phrase that has been offered, high-quality jobs. There's no evidence that this plan presents high-quality jobs. And this is a desperate need for our community. The idea of providing more jobs in the entertainment and recreation areas is unacceptable. Other alternative plans have been offered for sites that would would offer study and things like that, and they've not been looked at. Thank you for listening.
Okay, next we have a phone attendee. You should hear a prompt and then hit star six to unmute.
Yeah, am I there? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. Okay, hi, this is, yes, this is Alice Harowitz. Thank you very much. So Jay Gamble touched on this really quickly, but I'm wondering, did the planners who came to the conclusion that adding a thousand housing units at SDC will not have significant and unavoidable impacts on anything other than traffic, V M T, and historic preservation? Did they take into account other current and future development up and down Sonoma Valley? Was that taken into consideration, for example, two hundred and seventy-two units at El Noca, Kenwood Ranch, formerly Graywood, increased residential and commercial lot in far in the spring specific plan, probable housing at Hannah Boy Center? So is an aggregate analysis required in the E I R? And if not, I mean, how can the public possibly trust this conclusion that there's no significant and unavoidable impact? And then I also, I really agree with everybody about the evacuation route and that being impacted. And I would like to hear more about this. We keep hearing about the shelter-in-place facility. And I mean, to me, that sounds like last-ditch resort if you don't want to burn up in your car on an impacted road. So I'd really like to hear more about that facility, how many people, does that, is that planned for? Really, yeah, I've got a lot of questions about that. So, okay, thank you so much.
Okay, next we have Jim Price. Jim, you should be able to unmute.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the time. First of all, I want to thank Paul Rocket for his insightful comments. I wholeheartedly support them. Also, Nick Brown, thank you for those insightful comments as well. And Alice is always, always looking at the obvious that is there that none of us see. Also, I want to thank Arthur Dawson and his leadership at the MAC for leading this effort to try to bring sanity to this process. As I look at this, you know, we are absolutely lost in the weeds, and we are dealing with experts with leading them in, leading us into weeds. I think the only solution here is something, you know, called community control. They talk about a project sponsor, you know, in the, in the, in, when, when we have our planners talking about project sponsors, really, that's an owner, that's a developer. That's somebody that once the land is sold to them, we as a community will have no control over that. We need to look at mechanisms right now, you know, that, that we can implement in order to gain control over the future of the, of the SDC. Having, you know, the lands in public hands in perpetuity, you know, so that we can do the right thing by the land, as Tracy Salsita says, we need to listen to what the mountain is telling us. That's another way of saying, you know, looking at performance standards and having a thousand units right next to a wildlife quarter is totally incompatible, no matter how you try to plan it. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, next we have Greg Montgomery. Greg, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, my name is Greg Montgomery, and I'm with the Glen Ellen Historical Society and a longtime employee at SDC. I had fully intended to have prepared comments and to give my critique of the understanding of this draft E I R and specific plan. But after spending hours looking at these documents and consulting with friends, I have to say that these two documents are confusing, contradictory, and just full of assumptions. And though the historic preservation alternative has many components that look really good to me, I find that the many vague contingencies are a little troubling in terms such as, you know, if feasible and self-mitigating. You know, all these are like red flags in my book. And maybe I'm misinterpreting some of these legal terms, not really sure. So I'm just going to shoot straight from the hip here. Obviously, the county and Diet Batia have willfully ignored the wishes of the community at large. This is not a community-driven process that was promised. The size and scale of this proposal does not represent the overall consensus of the surrounding community. What you are offering us is a urban-style town of several thousand people dropped right in the middle of a small rural and historic community. A thousand homes and a thousand jobs? I mean, really, that's over the top and unacceptable in my view.
Okay, next we have Bonnie Brown. Bonnie, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. I'm Bonnie Brown with the SDC Campus Project. We have been working for two years. We have a proposal out there for adaptively reusing some of the residential buildings existing at SDC. This is for low-income folks, which are not typically addressed by any affordable housing, people below thirty percent of AMI. So the legislation requires from the state of California that there be housing for people with disabilities. These buildings are ready to go. They are set up for people with disabilities who have lived there for over half a century. They are in great condition. An adaptive reuse, as Commissioner Morgan has stated before so eloquently, is not more expensive than building new. And I'd also like to ask that visitability be a requirement of any new construction of homes at SDC. Petaluma, the town has just adopted that, and it means that anybody who has a disability wheelchair with a cane or whatever can enter a home and visit their friends, not just being secluded at home, but being able to get out and visit. This, this is all important, low-income housing and people with disabilities. We need to have equity in our community. This is all about legacy of care, which this proposal says gives lip service to, but I don't see that happening here. I hope you step up. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Bryce Jones. Bryce, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, I'd like to thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. Like to start out by thanking the staff involved for all their work on the project. Brian O. and Bradley Dunn have definitely, I think, really designed a project that meets a lot of the county's needs. Often, you know, these projects are often met by opposition, and it's a bit of a thankless job, but we desperately need housing. You know, I've got a six-year-old daughter, and I wonder where our students are going to live once they graduate high school. It's also critically important for the health of our business community and to give them confidence that they can hire employees and their, their future staff will have a place to live, and they can continue to grow their business in this community. It definitely, you know, helps us go a long way towards seeking a pro-housing designation, which permit some of the staff should be applauded for making a goal. And I definitely like the mix of housing and business. And there's a tremendous amount of open space being preserved here. And this really does look like, I think, a great place for people to live. And I once again thank them for all their hard work on this and definitely support the plan. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Nancy Kerwin. Nancy, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening. I wanted to thank all the entities involved in putting on this public meeting. Although I feel as if, starting with Brian O.'s showing us the timeline, that basically he's just going down the timeline, checking, checking boxes, that we aren't making any substantive improvements on the plans as proposed. I'm only going to address one small thing. I want to thank Mark and Richard for their comments on the Riparian Corridor. If you could invite stick to one small thing, it's an example of the bigger problem. Once you propose a higher density, you need a greater need for protecting the natural environment. With the stream going through the campus, connecting the wildlife corridor to other areas where the animals go through, the stream bank will be more impacted due to higher runoff. The temperature of the water will be increased after years of dedicated effort by SDC to increase the salmonid population. The habitat connectivity and enhanced biodiversity will all be impacted much more great because of the concentrated development there. Water quality needs more protection because of the nitrogen phosphorus sediments and pollutants from things like roadways and landscaping. So overall, when you have greater density, you need greater protection.
Okay, next we have Roger Peters. Roger, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. I just have one comment and two questions, requests from permit Sonoma or for permit Sonoma. First, just listening to all of these questions and comments, I think it would be reasonable for permit Sonoma to consider an extension of time for comments on this draft environmental impact report. Secondly, I see on page four-ten footnote one hundred and eighteen, there is a W Trans focused traffic operations analysis that was done in August twenty-twenty-two. I don't believe that's made available. I'd like to see that. I think that should be posted. So an opportunity to provide comments on that would be appropriate because although it's true that vehicle miles traveled is the standard for purposes of CEQA analysis, for purposes of general land use development and zoning and other activities that are required here, the county has the opportunity to consider broader traffic considerations than vehicle miles traveled. Second, I think it would be helpful if, rather than just giving F A R ratios and things like that, that permit Sonoma gives some sense of what the maximum square footage would be available for any large parcel. And secondly, whether accessory development units would also be allowed. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Brad McCarthy. Brad, you should be able to unmute.
Hello. The draft EIR doesn't seem to look at the impact of psych on cyclists and pedestrians outside of the campus. It does acknowledge that V M T along Arnold Drive and Highway twelve will increase and cannot be fully mitigated. Does the traffic impact analysis estimate the corresponding increase in the number of bicycle and pedestrian collisions along Arnold Drive and Highway twelve, both with and without bike and pedestrian infrastructure improvements? It's not valid to assume that the county or Caltrans will make the needed improvements as part of a future development. They have today been unable to make any improvements on these roadways in the impacted area. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Lori Pyle. Lori, you should be able to unmute.
Hi. The official conclusion by permit Sonoma of the specific plan and the E I R is that there will be no significant impact upon the rural atmosphere of the community, the sensitive ecological structure of the area, or the historic preservation on SDC. I beg to differ. In twenty-twenty, the U.S. Census Bureau counted one thousand two hundred and fourteen residents in the surrounding town of Glen Ellen with five hundred and twenty-eight households. The proposal of one thousand homes on the SDC property will have a negative and destructive impact upon the area and the community. It will nearly double the number of homes and place them in the confines of the relatively small area of SDC. The number of residents in the area will be at least doubled as well. The rural atmosphere will be significantly impacted. The proposed road connector to Highway twelve runs right through a sensitive ecological area and would be detrimental to the ecological preservation of the habitat. The unavoidable destruction of historical buildings is unacceptable. They need to be preserved as part of the legacy of SDC. There has got to be a better way to ensure the preservation of the rural atmosphere, the ecologically sensitive areas, and the historic significance of SDC.
Okay, it looks like we are on our last commenter. So if anyone's been waiting to raise your hands, now would be the time. The next commenter is, I am sorry, I'm not going to pronounce your name correctly, but it's Megalyojo. You should be able to unmute.
Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate everyone's comment. I am a resident of Sonoma. I live on Crestway, which is by Wascalientes. I think our, everyone is trying really hard, but I think our proposal, the proposal and the citizens are so far apart. I know that the PRND is trying really hard to kind of work with all, you know, the different angles, the house shortage and, you know, the, the, the historical significance of the buildings. But I think in, in essence, we are so far apart, that would be great if somehow we can integrate the community in, in, in a formal way, so there can be a real voice for the people who live here. Because we don't, you know, I feel like in the, in the previous meeting, our comments were not integrated. I, I looked at the document and there's so many differences and very confusing. So somehow PRND can allow the citizens to have real comments, that would be great. PRND is shorting staff. They have a section for short-term rentals and it takes them forever, forever to respond and to come to give us permits to even rent our homes, a bedroom in our homes. So it'd be great if they can put together a group of people that can help with the citizens' comments in a more constructive way. Thank you.
All right, and Chair Freeman, from what I'm seeing, that does conclude public comments.
Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, and one. Public comment is now closed. Like to thank everybody for their sticking with us and for their comments. Appreciate it and I'm sure have given all of us additional things to think about. I did want to remind people the ability that they have to submit additional and longer comments, as we mentioned, to either Ariel or to Brian. While yes, in this public forum, we all have to sleep tonight. You know, it is one of those items where we have to keep it limited to ninety seconds, but we really do appreciate all of your voices. So at this point, I'd like to turn back to our presenters with Permit Sonoma and ask them if they have any responses to any of the comments that were made. I think the folks who asked any questions would appreciate any summary comments that you guys may have. So.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. And so to the members submitting public comment today. You know, I am appreciative of, you know, the wide range of comments that came on essentially every topic within the scope of the draft. And so, you know, we're hopeful that this discussion helps generate, you know, real feedback for us. And so we encourage that to, to come in writing so that we can address it as part of this process. And, you know, there was a comment that started the discussion around, you know, how we work with our native people and, you know, and so there's a process that is outlined through our government relationship with our tribes. And so that's something that is still ongoing and very much part of the process that we have. And so again, there's a number of things, you know, I appreciate the comments. I think there's a lot of good stuff that I will take and iterate into future presentations so that, you know, we are addressing, because, you know, I think there's a general comment that we're, we're you know, so far apart. And I would really encourage those people that have made that statement, really feel that way, reach out to me. I mean, I, you know, I am reachable. You know, this is what the process is for. If there are things in the draft that we're presenting, and I don't agree with the assertion that, you know, all the work that the public has put into this over the, the past, you know, two plus years hasn't materialized. And so I urge you, I encourage you to reach out and, you know, we're looking forward to improving the process and ultimately in the best product that we can put forward for board and planning commission consideration.
And, you know, and I would just say that, you know, the state of California has given us a timeline and a very specific charge to come up with a specific plan that meets the requirements that they set out. And, you know, if we don't comply with the requirements that the state set out, the state can move forward without us and we would lose our, you know, voice in the process. And so it's, you know, important that we continue at pace and, you know, meet the state's deadlines. So that, you know, we do have, you know, local control over, you know, the site. You know, and that a specific plan would be binding on a future project sponsor. You know, that would be required to comply with the, you know, the auspices of the specific plan.
From a procedural perspective, I'd like to just remind everyone, as Brian said at the outset, that the comments made here today by the public were directed towards the MACs. If you want us to respond to a comment on the draft EIR, we, we are asking you to provide that to us in writing. The email address, I believe it is put in the chat by somebody. And in addition, it'll be helpful to us when you provide the comment that you write in there, if it's a comment in the plan or the EIR. So that'll help us to, to decide which way to best address it and carry those comments forward to the decision makers. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this point, I would like to thank the presenters. Really appreciated you guys taking us through that, answering our questions. At this point, Ariel will be returning them to the audience. So the MAC and the SVCAC members can have their final comments. One thing I would like to say, though, is that we do have to take another short break. We'll be returning at nine thirty-five. And so basically a five-minute break just to give Jordy a break real quickly. So thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Quality low-income housing at SDC would lead directly to a much-needed housing increase. A much-needed increase in SVSD's enrollment because it would create accessible housing for, for families. In particular, our low-wage worker families, and it would keep actually the historical spirit of the developmental center. So full disclosure to everybody watching, I was the low-income child at Dunbar School, whose mom worked at SDC. And then I went on to work at SDC myself. My mom and I lived in small one-bedroom cottages. The living room is her bedroom because that's what we could afford, but we were really happy because we were able to do what we loved and, and work with people we loved. I know every crevice of that grounds and I know most of the faces who spent their lives there. So I'm going to age myself a little bit for everybody. I used to roller skate in the hallways of the old brick building when they were offices when I was a kid. So this facility has historically been populated with both a residential and a workforce community that requires housing that is low-income. And I have a lot of concerns about what housing on these grounds are going to look like moving forward. And while I can appreciate that we are being told that we need to accept something or it gets into the hands of the state and then we have no say. I don't think that that means that we need to throw our hands up in the air and, and cave to accepting something that's unacceptable. And I don't find a lack of true affordable housing something that's acceptable because we are losing our community in this valley. Our children are growing up and they can't find housing here and they're moving away, even though they want to stay. We are experiencing such a decline in enrollment in our public schools that we're going to be faced with making really, really difficult decisions. Like closing schools. I'm looking at you Dunbar because you have ninety-seven students and that is really scary. But what that tells us is that we're losing our community. And so I'm really concerned. I'm concerned about only five parcels for those with developmental disabilities on the land that was their home for so many years, who've now been spread into supported living and group housing, group home housing. And they're going to be losing some of the supports that the Department of Developmental Services put into place for them. Some of those supports that went into place had a timeframe attached to them because staff from SDC went with them and that wasn't forever. That was for a little while. And so those, those timeframes are wearing out. Where are they going to go? And, and they should have the option to come back to the place that was familiar. My mom was there when the lights went out. I went and sat under an oak tree on the last day. And I'd love to see some of those faces back in our community in their own parcels on that land, in their supported living with all the things that they need. But I'd also like to keep the spirit of true affordable, affordable housing that has always existed as a part of Sonoma Developmental Center's community. And so I'd love to have the county really revisit that and really ask themselves reflectively. Is this truly affordable? And are we really serving the Sonoma Valley? And do we want to throw our hands up in the air and say, well, we have to take something?
Thank you, Celeste. Iris?
I'd like to continue in the same vein that Celeste did, although with a different twist. I've lived in Boy's Springs forty-five years. And it's a wonderful place and it's linked to, to SDC because many of the people who, who lived in Boy's Springs worked at SDC and they, you know, modest homes. Homes that I don't believe would be seeing with the current plans at SDC. And it concerns me that the surrounding community, communities, Glen Ellen and, and the Springs are really not being considered in the assessment for these plans, the, the things that we really need to keep our community. And I'm talking about a low-income community with not great expectations for housing, just affordable, comfortable housing. not great expectations for housing, just affordable, comfortable housing. And that, I fear, is going to be lost with the increasing push toward market rate housing and basically gentrification. That's what we're looking at. And that's that's my major concern. Thank you. And I do think PRMD and the staff for the the work they've done, but I think you've been given a really difficult task. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. Is there anyone else from the Joe? Do you have any final comments? Don't mean to call you out if you don't. We're all good.
That's that's I know I just I do. Once I thank you all for the work too, just like I said. You know, a lot of work into that went into that. And I know there's a lot of pushback. So thank you for being here and sitting through it. And I wasn't at the original one in January, so I apologize. But I think the the one thing I want to bring up, I think Celeste is totally right, affordable housing needs to be there, but we talk, you know, equity. This isn't helping the valley with with services in general, right? So it's still valley residents are going to have to make their way to Santa Rosa for mental health or, you know, things beyond what we have here. So I would love, and like I said, I know we're so far into this, but to rethink what sort of resources can be brought to SDC for those valley residents beyond just housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I'm not sure, Jesus. Okay. Um, oh, hi, Jesus.
Yes. Well, I feel like my this comment might be a little controversial, but well, I'll I'm gonna say it anyways. I feel like a lot of the pushback for no development, non, not nothing at all at the SDC. Felix is rooted in a sense of the unknown of what is going to happen when, if ever, if something happens and something is developed. But I I would like to just reassure that the unknown is the unknown, and we don't know if it's going to be negative. And we don't just don't jump into the negative, think about positive outcomes. And yes, thank you.
Thank you, Jesus. Okay, I believe that that concludes the Springs MAC. I just want to add that I agree with my colleagues. I really look at the human benefit here. We our community is diminishing and it's because people can't live here. Our teachers can't live here. Our firefighters can't live here. Our nurses can't live here. And why would you commute here? So I really just want us to, I understand the evacuation concern. I understand I was on that road with y'all for two or three hours. So I get it. But we can't, but the people that are our community and our children can't stay here. And I think that's that's a shame. And we all came here to raise our families and we're all having to leave. So we have an opportunity here. Thank you.
You, Chair Itri. At this point, I'd like to turn to the the North Valley MAC and ask Chair Gossem to pull his his members. You're on mute. Chair Gossem, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Eagles, would you like to make a comment?
Just very briefly, because I already commented, but I really appreciate the comments just made the Springs member. And I think there is a balance between really working toward really truly affordable housing and development. But I just wanted to state that permit Sonoma staff has has emphasized that the state has put out requirements, which we certainly understand, but as I understand it, the state really is intent on selling the site and did not dictate the scale of development. So again, I think considering reducing the scale, the the scale of of development from a thousand homes would will go a long way to addressing some of the concerns I've heard tonight, not all of them. And and certainly, I I believe that affordable housing has to be a priority. But I will say that scale will address some of the other concerns we've heard tonight. Thank you. I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Councilmember Eagles. Councilmember Dickey, unless you want to wait till the CAC comments.
Yeah, again, I'll comment as a CAC member.
Okay. Councilmember Newhauser.
Thank you. Yeah, it's it's this is a complex problem of many different masters to serve and unfortunately, it appears that that the different interests are being put at odds with each other. And I I really would hope that we could look beyond the different interests and the competition for these resources and look to just what's best for the community at large and and the land. I I also want to commend the efforts of the planning team. I it feels like you're trying to drive a a square peg into a round hole with this. I I think it's unfortunate, though, that we keep being reminded that the state could just walk away and reject this and that the county won't have any say in or which implies that the community will not have a say in what happens with this land. And I it feels, I hate to use the term blackmail, but it feels like we're being told that we have to cave in to this vague definition of financial feasibility in order to accommodate the state's interests, or we will lose a voice at all. So my my request is that the county, and this is this is a request that's been made many times and by many different people, that we look at more creative financing. And I think that those from that have spoken on behalf of the affordable housing community have said that there are actually different funding mechanisms to increase the percentage of affordable housing and the for lower income classifications, so that it's not just all moderate to market rate housing. So I, again, this is really in the spirit of trying to not only protect the property, but also to accommodate community members that can't afford to live here. I think we can do both, specifically on wildfire. I just wanted to point out one issue that I think is a flaw. The in the in the assessment, the the plan and the EIR refer to the areas being not in a high risk area, but but they invoke the CalFiR's state responsibility area, the the there is a different map for the local responsibility area. And it actually does show that this is a moderate to high risk area on the campus with is surrounded by from anywhere from moderate to very high risk. So I think that that needs to be corrected in the EIR additional comments we can submit later. But I just want to again commend everyone, the public, as well as the planners on the very thoughtful and productive comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And Councilmember Morgan.
Okay, as I needed. Okay, thank you, Arthur. First of all, I want to thank the public that hung in there. It's a difficult thing to do. And all of their comments and just thank you for being here. We need your voices. We need more people like you to step forward and and, you know, make your wishes be known. We we just really need community. So thank you for being there. And some of you are still here. So thank you. As Mark said, this is a very complex issue. We're looking at housing and jobs and equity and wanting economic growth. And the history of this incredible place and climate change and our community. I myself have lived here for over thirty years. I raised my son here and I have seen so many changes. I completely relate to what everyone on this in the Springs was saying about affordable housing. It's tragic, the Dunbar situation. I saw that school as a thriving, beautiful school, and now there are ninety children there. People cannot afford to live here. My son cannot afford to live here. It's it's just a terrible situation. In my comments, I'm going to reiterate them that we need to bring all of these forces together and find some solutions where both people and the land can live together equitably. And I'll just leave it at that. Let's all try to work really hard to fix this problem and to try to get along. So thank you.
Thank you, Angela. And I think I'm the last one on the on the North Sonoma Valley MAC. So yeah, I also just want to voice my support for for what Mate and Celeste and Iris mentioned and just there's such an opportunity at SDC and it and it feels like we're on the verge of just squandering it and creating seven hundred and fifty market level homes for maybe you know, people from San Francisco who want a second home in the wine country, and that just isn't going to serve our kids, my kids, I raised two kids here and and they're, you know, unlikely to come back unless they live at our house, which would be okay, but I'd like to think they could live some they could afford somewhere else. So yeah, I really, I really feel all those things and there's there's so much potential. And you know, the MAC letter from January talked about fifty or seventy five percent affordable. And, you know, however you want to define that, but certainly it should be for people that really need, you know, need the help in some way or other, whether it's supportive housing or low income or any of those things. So I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. You know, there's a lot of uncertainties been raised in this conversation. And I think, you know, the way to deal with that is to is to do this as a phased plan. You know, time is long. Doesn't have to all happen at once. We can do this partway. We can start with a smaller development. Permit Sonoma has shown us the way forward with the historic preservation alternative as a starting point for a revised plan. You know, we could, we could work on making sure that half or more of those homes were were you know, for low income and and supportive housing. And that, along with phase development, performance standards, public private partnership and some kind of a governmental structure that will give us some local control over what happens there, I think. I think that's all possible. We just have to dream big enough to make it happen. Let's not get stuck in this. There's plenty of money around. It's just a matter of going out and finding it, not to make it sound too simple. I believe the resources are there if we put our minds to it. And I'll stop there. Thanks.
And through the chair, I apologize for interrupting. Chair Dawson, Councilmember Cooper is here too, if you'd like to see if he has any comments.
Okay, yeah, Councilmember Cooper, would you like to to comment?
No, no comment. Thank you, though.
Okay, thanks for being here.
Yeah.
All right, I'll I'll turn the turn it back over to Chairman Freeman.
Chair Freeman. To the North Sonoma Valley MAC, appreciate you guys. And I first wanted to start, unfortunately, our Commissioner Ex officio Carr wasn't able to comment due to connection issues, but I just want to read a message that he's left for all of us, just in case some of you haven't seen it and also for the public. I apologize for not being able to speak via phone or Zoom. I would suggest that a good EIR is essential to adopting a specific plan, regardless what it is, what is in the plan. If members want to comment on the EIR to that end, I would suggest joining the recently announced Sonoma Land Trust Seminar on September eighth. The draft EIR is very illuminating once you read it, particularly the project description. Thank you for dropping that note, Commissioner Carr. Now I would like to turn to the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commissioners and ask them, and I'm just going to go down our list in order. I hope you guys are okay with that. I'm going to start with Commissioner Spalding and ask her for any comments that she may have.
Thank you. Yeah, I I agree with almost everything that was said tonight. It doesn't help anybody. I especially want to endorse comments made by Vicky Hill in a written response to the draft EIR. The planning department has been put between a really, really hard rock and a hard place. And I appreciate the effort that they've made to come up with a compromise that will work. I do support the less housing and stronger environmental restrictions. I'm going to retire. Thank you very much. Thanks to everybody who's here.
Thank you, Commissioner Spalding. Commissioner Dickey.
Really want to thank everybody for being here tonight. This is, it is tough to go through this, especially for those of us like myself who are not accustomed to it. It is complex. So I do, I want to thank everybody for being here. However, we as the Sonoma Valley community were promised a community driven process in regards to this development of a specific plan. And as was stated earlier tonight, that assurance has not been met. You know, none of the citizens groups in the valley supported the density as designated in the specific plan. And yet affordable housing has been repeatedly supported in excess of the numbers proposed by the county. We've been the Sonoma County, the Sonoma Valley community, we've been subjected to platitudes, cliches and banalities despite the very pointed questions and concerns that have been repeatedly presented by our groups to the county. And the result of this plan is yesterdayville. It's not tomorrowland. You know, it's a, it's like it refers back to a time when water was plentiful and, you know, housing was easy to build and and, you know, we didn't have to be concerned about roadways and evacuations. And that is not our reality now. It is not. And this plan does not reflect even the present, much less the future. And that frustrates me enormously. As was said earlier, we it feels like we're squandering an opportunity here. And I just frustrates me so enormously. You know, SDC development is a defining moment in the history of Sonoma County. It's going to be the largest development in home in our home county since the Sonoma Mountain Village Development in Roner Park. That's accessible by the Sonoma Mountain Parkway and within a mile of Highway one oh one. Imagine that a parkway and freeway access for the residents of a thousand plus home development within an area designated for urban growth density. And then contrast that with the development project proposal for SDC. I just, you know, I don't know what the alternatives are at this point, you know, we're so far down the road. But I don't feel like feeling like we're being held hostage for one. And the other is that we need a plan that embraces the future. You know, that that it should be a hundred percent affordable housing. We don't need more market rate housing. So, you know, just don't embrace yesterdayville. That's all I'm asking, you know, look to the future. Thanks very much for everybody.
Commissioner Dickey and Commissioner Val. Commissioner Dickey. Commissioner Val.
I just want to say thanks so much to Matt. I couldn't agree more.
Thank you, Commissioner Val. Commissioner Pulverenti.
I also agree with what Vice Chair Dickey stated. I'm right in support of that. I do want to make just a couple comments, and that is, this is a personal feeling. As the plan currently exists, I believe this is overdevelopment. I am in support of more adaptive reuse of the existing buildings, which could provide perfect affordable housing. I also see no analysis of the cumulative effect with other development planned in Sonoma Valley. As example, the Kenwood Resort at the base of Hood Mountain. I realize that it's only a fifty-room hotel, but it's going to have a spa and it's going to have a restaurant, which is going to draw a lot of one-day travelers. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Pulverenti. Commissioner Coconut.
No additional comments from me, but thank you for all of the work done by Permit Sonoma and thanks to the entire SDCAC and the other commissions as well for their contributions.
Commissioner Homosio.
I too wanted to thank the county and Brian for his work. This is a very challenging project. It's going to be a challenge to make sure it pencils out for the state. I want to reiterate what some of our colleagues have said about the importance of low-income housing, deed-restricted housing, and the missing middle housing. We, as residents of the valley, are aging and our kids are going away. And that is a horrible situation to be, to where we've raised our families here and they cannot live here. And so this is an opportunity to help correct that and bring some of our kids back. I also want to make sure that in whatever plan is pushed forward, moved forward, that we consider the wildlife corridor and not just maintain it, but look at ways to expand it and tap into federal resources available for preserving wildlife corridors. And Joe Harden made a great point. Our kids need things to do, and our kids also need things to do year-round. And so I urge that if plans are made for for fields that they're considered to be all-weather fields, so that kids have sports they can play during the, you know, all year-round. So that's just my thoughts for now. Thank you.
I just want to say Rebecca just made some great points. Thank you. And in listening tonight to the concerns of the community, the concerns that people have brought up, it is, there's, there's no easy answer here. But my heart goes out to the people of this community who don't, we don't have adequate housing. We don't have affordable, enough affordable housing for people of limited means. We don't have enough housing for our seniors. We don't have specific housing for our disabled community. And that's a sincere issue. But I also take into consideration, you know, we all have fears about what happens, you know, if, when there's another fire. And, you know, we all, I think as a community, carry that within us because, you know, most of us were here. So it's a delicate balance. But multiple people have said it already tonight, that we have an amazing opportunity here to really affect our community, our valley, in a really positive way. And I commend the folks at Permit Sonoma for their hard work. And I commend the people here who've stayed online till, what time is it? It's almost ten after ten, because we care. And I would say, keep caring and keep commenting. And there has to be some give and take. It's probably not going to be very many people that get exactly what, you know, everything that you want. But, you know, don't stop fighting for it because it's important. And anyway, that's all I have to say. I'm proud of all of us. Thank you.
Commissioner Truesdale.
I have never heard the comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Commissioner Brown.
I, I really support what Vice Chair Dickey said and Commissioner Homosio. And essentially, the, the heart and the soul of my position is what Celeste and Iris said. And I have a strong feeling that what's going to get this process frankly on a different track, if at all, is going to have to be the threat of a finding of an inadequate EIR. And that's going to, that's all, that's in many ways a legal requirement. But it's also something that can be argued if we really do take, and the community does, really do translate all their comments into questions. Unfortunately, there is a legal format for challenging findings, conclusions, statements in the EIR. And it is, by question, our consultants have made a reference to that by saying, make sure you reference the correct document in terms of your comments. But comments do not require an answer. What requires an answer is a question. And, you know, it sounds simple-minded, but that is really what the legal obligation is of the county to respond is only to questions. So gather up the questions, your questions, tell everybody who had questions or comments that they got to put them into questions. And maybe an abundance of questions will buy us some time in order to help this process stop and really look into the future and deal with some of the real fundamental issues that continue to be raised, that continue to be raised when we get together and look at this project. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Ex officio, Commissioner Felder.
Thank you. Well, this is certainly a very complex issue. And I think there have been a wealth of constructive comments and questions that have been raised tonight. But unfortunately, there's been a very negative tone to almost all of them, but an overwhelming amount of those comments. And for this reason, I think that the county planners have missed the mark on what this community really wants to see for the SDC. And I wish that they could take a change in direction and listen to what has been talked about for months and months and months and come to the conclusion that what they're providing is not what we want. So I hope that there's a way forward for this where that can, where it can be resolved. But the, the current plan that has been presented is just missing the mark.
Yes, thank you. I concur with my colleague, Mr. Felder. I just wanted to say in general terms, I've been very concerned about the economic impact of a hotel in this area. It's worse than a step backwards. The Sonoma Developmental Center was designed to serve the people of California, the people of Sonoma County, and to the betterment and to help individuals who had exceptional needs. And we are instead creating an economic framework based on, you know, hospitality interests. And it's, it's just a disgrace to the memories of those people and the hard work of the people who were at the developmental center to take something that was for the betterment of, of human life and instead turn it into this other, this other thing. And along with that, aside from those sort of, you know, big-picture items, the people that worked there had living wages, retirement benefits, in some cases, housing. And we should have at least that in whatever economic generation comes into that site. And I would hope that the state of California would recognize that this is a jewel and that they need to continue to put something there that is reflective of our county, of our state, and the good people of California. Thank you all for everything you're saying here. I associate myself with all of your comments and are continuing in this fight to get the right thing at the right place. Thanks.
I might ask Commissioner Amaretto Branthit. Commissioner Branthit.
Commissioner Branthit, you're on mute. If you're talking, you look like you're talking.
Sorry, I'm here now. Commissioner Freeman, thank you. I had hoped to maybe just offer the flippant, I have a lot to say, but no comment. And certainly after Sandra Lowe's comments, I, I don't, I don't want to be a downer, and I, I think I was last time we considered this item. If we can't, as a community, come to some census consensus around this, I fear that the state is going to do the worst that they could possibly do, which is lease this property for ninety-nine years and take it completely out of county planning control. And none of us will have anything to say about what gets done to this property. And I, I'm sorry to be a downer at the end of a long, long public process here. I'm not seeing consensus. I'm not seeing a vision that all of us agree on. And I had hoped to see that. I have to tell you, I'm a proponent of a thousand units of almost all affordable housing. I don't see a need for a hotel. I don't see a need for a conference center. But my views are immaterial if we all can't come to some level of consensus. And I'm just, I'm still not seeing it from the community. And I don't know what to say that's positive in response to that. Thank you for the opportunity comment.
At this point, I would turn to Commissioner Carr, but I think we aren't going to get him be able to speak. And so I'm going to make a brief comment, just because you guys have all summarized everything so well yourselves. But I just, I can't help but think that this is sausage-making in the best way and the worst way. And, you know, I think everybody feels, just through the comments that I've listened to, you know, it's hard to stand on any one thing that each of us wants because I can't turn to any of my fellow community members and say what they want is wrong. It's just, it's, it's disheartening on some level here that, again, we can't come to consensus. I think it's just the fact that the interests are very divergent and on some level just contradict each other. But however, I will say that I'm just glad and very proud to be sitting with all of you and also to have had a community that has spoken up, and yes, with some level of negativity. But I think the passion is certainly there, and we all love our valley. So I just, at that point, at this point, I'd just like to say thank you all very much for a very long night. And at this point, I'd like to turn to, let me just check and make sure. I think I'd like to turn to the one topic that we need a resolution on tonight, and that is to adjourn the meeting. So I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners on the Sonoma Valley Citizen Advisory or movement to do so and a vote.
I propose we adjourn the meeting.
I have a first. Thank you, Commissioner Dickey. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Secretary Spalding. All in favor, I'd raise your hands or say aye. Thank you all for all of your participation. Cheers.
And thank you to Jordy, and thank you to Lynn Marie, who has been taking minutes. They're the real heroes.
I will say that, go ahead. I just want to say Jordy is a hero because he had to talk the whole time that all of us were talking. In and of itself is amazing.
Awesome.
Thank you, Jordy. Thanks, Tim.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.